Welcome everyone to the Planning Board Meeting of January 16th, 2020. Please join us for the Fudge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Good there.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Before we start our meeting, the meat of our agenda, we have a few continuances. If I may have a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We're going to take Item 7H, 7I together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Item 7H is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.22.2. Outdoor storage of supplies and equipment incidental to permitted uses, subject to requirements for location, lighting, screening, fencing, cover, and safety precautions of the zoning bylaws, 376 Cambridge Street, The Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant. And Item 7I is a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 376 Cambridge Street, The Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant.
Motion to continue the matters of Planning Board Meeting of February 6th, as requested by the applicant's engineer in a memo dated January 16th, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Do we need to discuss or?
I just want to, not discussion, I just wanted to give you an update. We did get a memo from Frank DePietro, the applicant's engineer. They have found a place in Wilmington. They will be moving all of their fabrication to Wilmington. They have indicated that they're looking to stay at this location for a showroom. And they're still contemplating the potential of a very small amount of outdoor storage, but we don't know exactly what yet and we're working with the applicant. So you will either see a much reduced proposal on site or a withdrawal of the outdoor storage. So, okay, that should be coming soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like a good outcome for that.
Yes.
Yep. Madam Chair, a motion to take 7J out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Item 7J, excuse me, is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.22.2. Solar energy system, ground mounted of the zoning bylaws, 50 Margaret Street, Northeast Solar Services Doing Business as Revolution is the applicant.
Madam Chair, a motion to continue the matters of Planning Board Meeting of February 6th, 2020, as requested by the applicant in a phone conversation on January 13th, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Next, we have citizens' time. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please come forward. Welcome, and please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Monty Pearson. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 3 and also the chairperson of the Land Use Committee. Last night at its meeting, the committee voted to endorse the idea of a townwide solar advisory committee to look into the question of having some sort of bylaws about having solar panels on the roofs of commercial buildings. We had discussed that at the planning meeting in December, and it was a little too complicated to go through quickly, and so we needed to have some kind of discussion on that. And upon talking to other people, we thought that the best way to look at this might be to have representatives from a number of different organizations in town be part of it. And our first thought at Land Use was to have somebody from the Planning Board be a part of that. So if one or two people from your group wants to be part of that, I'm anticipating that we would have maybe four or five meetings between now and June and come up with some kind of recommendation for the September town meeting. So I'm here to extend an invitation to you folks, and I'll go about checking with other people, and if you could talk to each other about if you want to have a representative on the committee, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I think that's a great idea, and I appreciate you reaching out to us and including us in this process. I have a question. I'm sure we're going to want to point at least one person to the committee, and we will get back to you. My question is, will this committee be considering only solar or all kinds of alternative energy sources?
I think that the idea would be to look primarily at solar right now, because there's the question of putting solar panels on a roof. And that if the committee, if the members of the committee enjoy working with one another, that we could go ahead and look at other issues related to the carbon footprint of town and other things that we might, the town might do to advance those kinds of things. So it could be an ongoing, sustainable Burlington Committee, but we didn't want to give it too large a charge at the beginning and have a large bureaucratic process that wasted six months.
I understand. Thank you. It sounds like a great committee. I'm glad you're forming it, and I'm sure we're going to want to be a part of it.
Great, great, good. Thank you. We figured that you'd want to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on citizens' time? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to announcements.
Actually, sorry, I'll let Liz do the nonsense, but I just think we might be beneficial. We have a discussion item that was on the agenda, just for folks that might be watching on TV or in the audience. The discussion item of the withdrawal of 108 Muller Road. That there was some discussion about potentially withdrawing and the applicant submitting a new application. We have discussed that with council, and there's just, we need to iron out a few things before we take any action on that. So the discussion item that was on the agenda will be.
Will not be discussed.
Will not be discussed. Doesn't need to formally be continued, because it wasn't a public meeting or a public hearing, but I just want to let the audience, everyone know in the audience, or anyone watching.
So if that's why you're here, you can go home now.
We're not talking about 108 Muller Road tonight.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
And then Liz can take it away.
Sure. So just a few announcements, upcoming things. We'll be celebrating Martin Luther Junior King Day, King Junior Day, on Monday, January 20th. All of our town offices will be closed. There will be a subcommittee meeting of, the Sculpture Park Subcommittee meeting that will happen on Tuesday, January 21st, at 7:30 a.m. in the principal's conference room at Burlington High School. Kristin, maybe you want to elaborate a little bit on this. You and Amy are looking to do a town meeting info session that you are going to record for BCAT.
I put this on here. So last year, Amy used to do info sessions, then invited people. Last year, she turned it into a show she did on BCAT, and then they ran it over and over again, so if you couldn't make that time. And she found that to be successful. So I'm meeting her at BCAT next Wednesday, but there will be a town meeting info, BCAT program. So just, all I wanted, I don't know exactly when it's going to air, but just wanted to let people know it will be there.
So town meeting is January 27th at 7:00 p.m. in the Performing Arts Center at Burlington High School. The deadline for zoning warrant articles for this May's upcoming town meeting is Tuesday, February 11th. That's only for zoning warrant articles. The last date of register to vote for the presidential primary for Super Tuesday is Wednesday, February 12th. The zoning bylaw review committee will be meeting on Wednesday, February 12th at 6:00 p.m. in the Annex Basement. And the last day to return papers for the local town elections, so local seats on town boards and committees, is Friday, February 14th at 5:00 p.m. And go to the town clerk's office for that.
Thank you.
Just one.
Yes?
I'm not sure, but I think the zoning bylaw review committee has been rescheduled to the 5th. Is that correct, Sherry? Okay. Not the 12th, but rather the 5th.
Okay. Oh, you're right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would just like to extend for myself and from the Planning Board the thoughts, prayers, and condolences to Muriel O'Brien and her family as they endured a tragic fire to their house. Muriel has donated well in excess of 20 years to the town of Burlington, the Council on Aging, and brought a lot of joy to a lot of seniors during that period of time. She's, she was a real, she is a real stick by it. She was, she had emcee the Vaudeville shows. She had sing and dance and, you know, and was a member of the Council on Aging for a lot of years. And had a tragic fire at her house and unfortunately lost her son during the process of the fire. Just like to extend all our thoughts to them.
Thank you, Joe. We do not have any legal notices or nonapprovals, so we'll move on to administrative matters. Our first administrative matter is Item 6A, a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, Off Wheeler Road, Jumbo Self-Storage LLC Doing Business as Jumbo Capital Management is the applicant. Welcome, and please state your names for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein. I have with me this evening, to my left, Andy Graves from BL Companies, the site engineers on this. A little history back in April, I believe, of 2017. This board issued a special permit for the construction of a self-storage facility. At the same time, we were going through the Conservation Commission. The order of conditions that was ultimately issued was appealed. Recently, the DEP issued a superseding order of conditions for the site with some minor changes. We went to the Conservation Commission last week, I think it was last week, and they endorsed the minor changes for their permit. We're here this evening so that the plans are in, they coincide with the record plans. So I'll have Andy walk the board through what those changes are.
So essentially, there were two kinds of groups of changes. First were ones that impacted sort of underground infrastructure, impacted stormwater storage. And there are three other changes that impacted grading and the site a little bit. So I'm going to walk you through those changes right now. The first change was, can you hear me all off of the microphone?
Just use the microphone for people on TV.
So the first change was they wanted to capture more water in the rain garden for infiltration store purposes. So the rain garden is at this end of the parking lot. It improved, enlarged in size maybe 15%, 20% to capture more of the runoff from the parking lot before it discharged into the retention system under the parking lot. The other change was to minimize the amount of impact in the upland review area. So this was a slightly graded slope in this area here. So to minimize the grading and impact in the area, we put a retaining wall here. So it impacted maybe a couple hundred square feet of grading in this area. The one, the largest change was one that the DEP's interpretation of compensatory storage was slightly different than ours. So they required us to provide more storage at a higher elevation. So as a result, the original compensatory area that was replanted is in this area. So as a result, to provide more compensatory storage at a higher elevation, we had to regrade this area more closer to the Vine Brook tributary, and then had to replant this area. So that's the really summary of changes. No changes to the parking lot, the building structure, appearance of the building at all. It's just those three changes to the surface of it.
And the conservation restriction will stay in place. There will be a conservation restriction when this is all done for all the property adjacent to, on the other side of the driveway and along the Vine Brook.
Before I turn it over to the board for questions, one quick question for you. Am I correct in understanding that these changes are those that are requested by the Department of Environmental Protection and nothing else?
That is correct, yep.
Okay, thank you. Paul, do you have any questions?
No, I'm glad they're doing everything to upgrade that area, because that's pretty low, wet. So we need protection down there. But thank you, no, that's wrong.
Joe?
I don't have any personal comments. There are a couple of department comments, one from DPW Engineering and one from Conservation. I'm sure you guys have gotten those, right? So the first is from, excuse me, the first is from DPW Engineering, and it just, I have reviewed the above caption, offered the following comments after marrying the calculations submitted by Dresser Williams Away Inc. in HydroCAD with concerns to reach post four outflow to the eastern abutters. The easterly abutters, I come up with a much more significant outflow calculation of a 100-year storm event from the outfall. The other storm event, events, the difference is negligible. So they basically made a comment that there is a large difference between the 100-year and what was previously calculated, and they just wanted to make sure that that was explained, that the 100-year has a 2.82, 5.50, which is up 2.68. As long as you understand that, I guess that's really what they want to get across. And the Conservation just says that they will remove their previous comments and that they will be required to amend the order of conditions. So that's it.
Thank you. Can you all sit?
All set, yeah.
Mike?
Nothing, Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question. You said you had to increase the rain garden, which is over to the right in the corner?
Yeah, that's correct.
Besides that, so can you just tell me what was there before and what has changed on that? When you increased that, what did you remove or what was reduced?
So essentially, the contours for the basin stopped about 15, 20 feet closer to the parking lot. So the basin was deepened and widened and just brought it closer to the edge of the property. That was it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All set, thank you.
All right. I think there might be members of the audience that want to speak on this matter, and please come forward. It is a minor engineering change, but you're welcome to speak, but please keep it brief. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Betsy Hughes. I am the town meeting member from Precinct 7. And I'm here representing some views that residents as well, some of the concerned businesses, wanted me to share with this body about this, especially because some of the members of this body were not present a couple years ago when this was discovered, when this was discussed. There are a number of concerns about this development. Blanchard area has actually become a pretty nice area with a beautiful park, some nicely developed Class A space, and some now future biotech, hopefully, space that will also be nicely developed. So in that, with that as a context, the general concerns are around the fact that Blanchard Road routinely floods, that further development will not help that problem, may make it worse. No other use for these buildings that are being proposed to be built for self-storage, given the zoning requirements and available space for parking. Once it's built, it's going to sit, and if that business doesn't work, we're going to have a white elephant on our hands. At one of the earlier meetings, the developers said they're going to be selling the building, not using it. So there's questionable commitment to the community, risk that they will do minimal and leave, or the new owners may ignore the Planning Board conditions. Other than the DEP ruling, there are very few references to compliance in perpetuity. So I would encourage maybe you all to think about that as you make your determinations. Over the past couple of weeks, I've done some research, and there are 13 self-storage buildings in the immediate area of Burlington. I visited four of them. None of them are near capacity. Lots have space with deals to be had. I actually talked to some of the employees there. Generally, there's one employee on site at a time, but I did talk to some of the managers and kind of got some stories about how the space has been used and some of the stories that they have to tell about that. In one area, they talked about how people were using these storage units to live, because it's so cheap to do that, and there are bathrooms, putting pets in the spaces so they could go on vacation, and using it as lab space for illegal purposes. They're all prohibited by the Board of Health from storing hazardous materials. But how are they going to be able to monitor that, what customers actually store in those units? For example, grills with propane tanks, propane is a prohibited thing. As I said, they usually have one employee sitting in the office, and one would question how that one person can manage to monitor that. I took a look at how parking is actually used in these spaces as well. Unless you're purchasing a unit or supplies, and 92% of them actually do sell retail supplies, that people go inside the gate and park there and access it through the entry where the entrance of the storage dock, and there's usually a door there. So people are going to be parking in that area. In this case, that would be on the underneath part, where people are going to actually, as a practical matter, that's where people are going to park who have their units there. And I'm not sure that that is part of what has been discussed to this body. Zoning bylaw 7257 specifies that one parking space for every thousand square feet of gross floor area of storage, and zoning bylaw 7.259 specifies for retail business, uses a minimum of four parking spaces for every thousand square feet. I'm not sure that this is going to be in compliance with that. I encourage you to take a look at it. I guess in summary, the town of Burlington is trying to attract Class A kind of tenants, biotech and the like, and yet we are allowing land to be used by a business recognized, even by the town of Woburn, as a business that actually devalues the area. There's so much concern in Woburn, they actually have banned future development of self-storage units. And I'm hoping that the Planning Board will work to, I'm not sure what's going to happen tonight, but I'm hoping you can work to help this kind, avoid this kind of development in the future. Because I know Kristin's put a lot of work, you guys have put a lot of work into trying to upgrade some of this, and this just flies in the face of that. And so that's what I'm here to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sit there for a second.
Yes. You know I share your concerns. I don't disagree with anything, any of the concerns that you brought forward. And I want to hear from Member Gaffney as well, but unfortunately, that decision was made, and what we're discussing tonight is just the minor engineering change, which is actually making the situation better from an environmental standpoint. So we wouldn't want to not move forward with that, because it's actually an improvement on the property. It doesn't really affect what the use is at all.
I guess I would question on the structured parking area that they are putting.
Right, that's not what we're discussing tonight, but I understand your point.
Especially because there are new members to committee. I just want to make sure. This is pretty much the only time that I'll have to discuss this with this body, so I thought, you know.
Don't go anywhere. I think Member Gaffney may have a question for you.
Sure, thanks, Madam Chair. Just a question, when you talked about Woburn prohibiting self-storages, in your research on that, did you take a look why they did that?
Yeah, they did a study. I have the article that I will provide to you, that they did a study and they spoke at the town meeting, and there were articles in the local paper about it devaluing the businesses around that area.
Okay, yeah.
I'd be happy to share it with you all.
Yeah, so based on that, in Burlington, you think that's something that town meeting would propose to ban the future self-storage units in town?
I certainly think that is something that should be considered, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Did anyone else have any comment they wanted to make on this? No? Okay, then I think we need to move forward. This is, as I said, just voting on the minor engineering change. So if I may have an. Thanks, Bill. Motion?
Also, thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, did you want to speak on this matter?
I did.
Okay.
Monty Pearson from Precinct 3. I wanted to ask a question about the parking. Parking is underneath the building?
Yes, and I'm willing to hear your question, but you need to understand, we're not voting on that tonight. We're voting only on the minor engineering change, which are changes requested by the Department of Environmental Protection.
What I don't understand is if, if this is not zoned IH, then why do they have the right to have structured parking?
Madam Chair, can I respond to that?
Yes, you may.
It does need an explanation.
Yes.
There were only three, there were only three spots for parking underneath. The bylaw says that it's not a structure, you can have up to three spaces underneath the building. Anything over the three is a structure. So there were only three spaces at the loading dock. And the parking is outside the, outside.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to request for minor engineering change for the property located Off Wheeler Road to codify the changes made by the Department of Environmental Protection, superseding order of conditions regarding modifications to the stormwater management system as reflected on the red line site plan entitled BL Companies dated. Oh, permitting, permitting, there's a hole in my thing there. Permitting documents for proposed self-storage facility. Town of Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by the BL Companies, dated October 23rd, 2017, and revised to December 17th, consisting of eight sheets, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
I just want to verify, there is a hole in there, so Paul.
I didn't know how to read that.
Our next item is Item 6B, a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 3 and 5 Dartmouth Road, General Walker Estates subdivision. General Walker Estates is the applicant. I think we'll, welcome. Please have a seat and state your names for the record, please.
Yes. My name is Ed Champy, I'm with Waypoint Development. We're the owner of General Walker Estates. And this is Steve Dresser. He's the civil engineer on the site.
Steve Dresser, Dresser Williams &amp; Way, civil engineer.
So we've applied for a minor engineering change, and subsequently, we've received a letter from, suggesting that a third-party peer review be engaged for the process. So we're, obviously, we accept that process and we'll work through that. With that said, is this something that you want us to put the drawings on the board and explain what we're working on, or is this something that you'd prefer to wait for the third-party review?
I don't know what the will of the board is. I personally think we should wait for the third-party review. We do not intend to vote on anything tonight. As I understand it, we need to open this discussion so that we can move forward to get the third-party review.
Fair enough.
Am I correct in that understanding?
They certainly, I mean, it's, it's, this is one of the first times we've had Mr. Champy here. So I think it might be nice just to have them do a five-minute what this change is about, and then I'm happy to walk through what the peer review and the recommendation of council to do the peer review. And then I agree that we need to kind of take a pause, wait for the peer review to be awarded, discuss it with the applicant, have some internal meetings with department staff, and then come back to this board. But because it is opening, it might just be nice to know just the what.
Okay, we can do that. And also, I think we might have a few questions about things on the site that don't necessarily apply just to this engineering change. But we'll let you give a very brief overview, if possible.
Terrific. I'll let Steve do that, and we'll follow.
Can you be brief? So I'll just explain then why we're here, what the difference is. So this is, this is the approved.
Can you use the microphone?
Yes, and also, if there are members of the audience that live in the neighborhood, feel free to come around so you can see that.
So this is the approved plan, the purple are the approved houses, and the driveways essentially were meant to pitch back to the cul-de-sac, go into the catch basin system, and then alter that this orange is the subsurface infiltration system. So when they went to, when it was constructed, it was constructed with the driveways on the side, as opposed to pitching right back to the cul-de-sac. So these driveways now are no longer coming to the cul-de-sac, they're not getting in the catch basin system, and they're not finding their way to the infiltration system, which is what's required to have a zero increase in rate of runoff. So what we're proposing is systems to catch the runoff from the driveways, including a keep-cord berm on this side, an infiltration system on this side, and a stone trench to the right of that driveway. That will not only infiltrate some of the groundwater, but anything in excess would pitch to the infiltration system and meet the standards at that point.
All right. I'm sure. I'm sure that the members of the board probably have some other questions regarding this site, so let's give everyone a chance.
Yes, just a second.
Oh, sorry.
Just quickly, just kind of process administration, just to get out of the way for, and then have at it. So as you know, we've had a lot of conversations about this subdivision, and we have recently met with town council, talked and discussed with her what are the actions that we should be taking. The building department has sent a letter to the applicant to...
Cease and desist.
Does it say cease and desist? I just wasn't sure if it's exactly that or not. Cease and desist at this time. We had observed some changes to the site on these particular two sites after we'd signed the CO, and that's one of the reasons why this minor engineering change is in front of us. And what council had advised was, as mentioned, that we, we have a peer, we do a peer review for this particular minor engineering change, which we have created, we have sent out, we've sent the scope to the applicant, as well as sent out to potential bidders that we'd like to have bid on the project. So that should happen over the next few weeks, and then we'll have someone in. We don't think it's a large amount of work, it's just kind of review collectively, to review the systems. The two things that I just wanted to bring up is, just one for the applicant, is one of the questions that we had in developing the scope was, there was a question about grading, pre and post, kind of the, what happened with some grading in the back, and we wanted just, in terms of information, if you could provide some more detail, and I think, actually, what you have colored here looks a lot, is, I can just see it a little bit better than what was submitted. So if we could work with the applicant just to get a little bit more idea about the grading that was, is on those two properties, that would be good. And the second thing that I know the board has been asking for quite some time, and I know they're at a pause right now, but just in general, since you have Mr. Champy here, just kind of understanding what the plan is moving forward for the remainder of the sites, once things start up and running again. So that might, you might have the benefit tonight to ask some of those questions that are outside this, this particular minor engineering change.
Okay. I have a quick question, just on the peer review. Am I, so will the peer review, the company that does the peer review will be looking at the systems and determining whether or not the way the systems are built are going to handle the flow and that it's going to work properly? Will they actually be going out to the site to ensure that what is built, is built properly?
We have required a site investigations as part of the work.
Thank you. Thank you. Paul?
Yes. Did we approve these changes as far as the drivers were concerned? Because that's a significant change to the plan that originally came before us, is it not?
We had not approved, and that's why they're part of this minor engineering change. If, Mr. Dresser?
I really object to approving minor engineering changes after they're done, and in general, approving things after they're done. From when I first came on the board, you know, we had people doing whatever they wanted to do, and then they would come back and ask for us to give it our blessing. And we got one of the significant builders in town, they couldn't believe that I was insisting he come for a grading change. But I said, everybody's got cell phones, you know, if you're going to do something like that, you know, you have to call and get approval for. I, you know, I'd stop this process right now if I could, really. I'd say build it the way that it was planned. And maybe that's part of the problems as far as the grading and so forth, because they deviated from the plan just to do their own thing. And just as we're going forward with this, I'm willing to do whatever was within our power to not make any more further approvals until this ends up exactly as we want it.
I completely agree with you, Paul.
Thank you. That's my comment.
Thank you. Joe?
So I just want a little clarification, the two of them, so, so what, so the change that you're asking for is, on the one, the lot closest to the tip of the, of the cul-de-sac, that's a berm, that's, so in other words, you're directing the water towards the cul-de-sac with that berm?
No. But both, both lots are subject to change because the driveways are just, don't...
Right, so, right, so I'm...
This one, there's a high point in the drive, this portion of the driveway actually does come back to the, so this line here is kind of a high point.
Yep.
So this will come back, then this point here, as it is now, it drains this way, there's kind of a swell down here.
Yep.
That, you know, remained untouched, and it's always kind of draining to this point here. So we're going to put on a Cape Cod berm to stop the water from going that way.
So it's directing it to the swell?
Infiltration, so it's right into that.
Okay. So half, half of that driveway is being directed to the, to the catch basin, and the other half is being directed to the swell?
To this infiltration system. It all, it will all end up in here.
So it's all going to the same infiltration system, one's going via the catch basin, and the other one's going via the swell?
That's correct. Yeah, and on this side, there's a stone that we, where this all, and it comes this way and runs down, so we're going to put a stone trench in here to catch the runoff from here.
So just a stone trench, or is it going to be perforated pipe in there?
Yeah, with a perforated pipe because it connects...
And then that's going to...
Connects to the system.
So instead of going to the street, it's now going to be, it's going to be pitched to go to the infiltration system?
Correct. Yeah, almost the whole thing here, it's the high point here is pretty close to the road.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry. One quick question. So, so I guess my question, so, you know, where that is relying now on a perforated pipe and crushed stone, what if that, what if, in the event that snow is put there, how is that runoff going to go now? If it doesn't, if it never makes its way, if the, if the runoff never makes its way to the perforated pipe, where is it going?
I mean, if there's snow...
Pitching this way, right?
If the snow's blocking the rain, it would run off, it would just stay in here, but typically...
So it'd stay on the driveway?
If you have snow there, you have rain, it's greater than, it will melt the snow.
Well, eventually it will. If you get a big rainstorm and you've got a pile, and you get snow piled on the side of your driveway, preventing it from hitting that drainage system, which, which way is, is it pitched any way in particular?
It's pitched out.
Well, I know it's pitched out, but if, it's also going to be pitched one way or the other, so it's pitching back?
Yeah.
So ultimately, it'll slowly make its way back to that same area, but it won't do it through the, through the drainage system of your building? Because it's clearly, I mean, that's not even a question, that that is a scenario, that snow get piled over that drainage system if it's off the driveway?
We can surround the whole driveway with stone, and we'd do the same thing. It's either going to, it's either going to hold it on the driveway or get into the stone.
Right, but if it were pitched properly, I mean, if it were pitched to make its way back there anyways, you wouldn't even need it on there, right? So clearly, it's not really pitched that way. You know, it's not really pitched back, or else it would be making its way back anyway.
No, I mean, it's, because it's surface, you need to find a way to get it into the ground and order it into the infiltration basin.
That's right. So I, so I guess the driveway has got to, from front to back to the driveway, from front to back, it's got to have a pitch as well. Right? I mean, the main pitch is going to the outside, to your drainage, to your drainage system.
Daytime, it's pitched to the back.
So it is. It's pitched to the side and to the back.
Correct.
So ultimately, if it never makes its way into the drainage, it's going to the back.
Right, but we could, we could put, we could wrap the whole thing with stone.
Yeah, I mean, I, you get it, but, you know, as I said, if somebody, let's say somebody uses a plow to plow that driveway, and they just plow over that crushed stone, I mean, and, you know, then you get a big rainstorm in between, that's going to be a problem in there, right? In other words, if you're blocking all the, just like if you block the catch basins and, you know, and, and you've got a big rainstorm, there'd be no problem.
And that, if it would back up and grow, in this particular case, if there's somewhere, it would back onto the driveway, it would stay on the driveway.
Right.
If it were to run off-site, which is what our requirement is not to have it run off-site at a, at a greater rate.
Okay. Also?
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions about the development of the site in general. At the start of our meeting on November 21st, the gentleman owns two Dartmouth Road, came before a board and was concerned about the telephone pole that was supposed to be moved in his yard. Do you know the status of that and what's going on there?
Sure. So a couple of things from a process perspective, happy to answer your question, and then I'd like to go back and address a couple of the things that were said, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay. So it's Tony at two Dartmouth. So we've spoken on the, our plan is to remove the pole, but prior to doing that, put an underground service into the, to the house that's at four Dartmouth. So then, that pole currently feeds that house.
So that is going to happen?
It will happen. And we've talked, we've talked to Tony about that, and he's aware of that.
After that meeting, I went over and talked to Tony myself, and he was telling me about four Dartmouth Road. Initially, the, that house is going to be moved up to the road, but now it's not, it's kind of stuck back in Neverland. Do you know the reason why you decided not to move that house up to the road as previously planned?
There's, so first of all, the, the house is a, is a three-bed house, and through our evaluation, it was, it was a house that would be in Burlington for around a $600,000 price point, and we didn't think knocking it down to try and build a house for a million three would, made sense to us, and we also thought it was serving good purpose as it was. In addition to that, the portion of the old cul-de-sac, prior to being extended, a large portion of that is the front yard or the front area, and we had talked about petitioning the town at a town meeting to, to take that property and make it part of it. But with so much interaction between our company and the neighbors, and keep in mind that we bought this project after it was approved, we were a part of the original approvals, we felt that finishing the project, expediting that process and moving on was, made more sense.
Thank you. Bill?
No questions at the time, Madam Chair.
Yeah, just a couple of things in me. It's difficult to build these houses because of the drainage, I guess, is, is one of the big problems. When, in the past, we've had to impose things like underground store detention or retention or whatever, we've, at least I've always tried to make sure that if it fails, it's not going to fail to the detriment of the neighbors, but rather to the detriment of the people who are taking advantage of it. So is there a way to make sure that you, to Joe's point, either slope the driveway towards the house and lure it out to the cul-de-sac, but also towards the house, and put your drainage ditch between the house and the driveway rather than on the external side? Or build some kind of a non-permeable barrier, not just a Cape Cod berm, but something a little higher that would, if that driveway floods, that it doesn't run off that property? Is there, has any attention been paid to that?
So we had discussed a couple of solutions prior to Steve's team looking at the drainage, so we're open to whatever, whatever the solution is. I think that might come through the process of the peer review.
Okay.
But we wouldn't be beyond putting a structure in the middle of the driveway. For us, it's just a matter of getting to the solution, moving on, and finishing.
And just one other question. When did you purchase this whole development?
I think it was 2017, March or April.
Okay.
Probably built about 300 units since then.
Not on this property.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Not on this property.
Thanks.
There were, there were two other things, if you, if you'd please, the, the CO was issued, and, and we disagreed that the site was altered after the CO was issued, so I don't know if we can get Google Earth pictures over time, whatever. But we finished the site, we were waiting for power for eight months, and then when we got the power, we got the CO. So we've, we've, we haven't done any significant work on this site for a long time. And as disappointing as this for the town, we feel that as well. With regard to Mr. Raymond, we agree that, that someone shouldn't be able to do whatever they want, and we didn't do that. We build a significant amount of projects throughout the Commonwealth, many of which are in Boston and the suburbs around it. When we work on a, when a, when a cul-de-sac is planned, and a placeholder of the size of a house is put in play, and it's approved, we, if we were to alter that house, we would draw it, and then we asked Mr. Dresser to do that, and we gave him the design of the house, and then make sure that it fits within the infiltration plan that was planned for the building. We'll take responsibility for the fact that if the house was a foot higher out of the ground, we, we probably could have got the driveways to drain to the street, maybe two feet higher, they would have drained to the street. However, from a design perspective, we were trying to keep them low to the ground because they're five-windowed colonials, and, and it's, and it's appropriate. So it was our mistake, and we'll accept responsibility for that, and we'll do whatever it takes to make it right. But it wasn't an arrogant play in any way. It was just trying to do a good job.
I have one really quick housekeeping item that I want to ask about before I make my other comments. I'm told there's an excavator on the Francis Wyman Road site. There has been, it was requested prior to the Christmas holiday that that be removed, and it has not yet been removed. Why?
We've asked as well. We don't own it, but we've asked for it to be removed.
You own the property.
We don't, right, so we, we'll, we'll move the excavator, but we've asked many times and we're told it was being moved, and it wasn't. So we will move it.
Don't ask, just, just make sure it's done. You own the property, you have control over that.
They don't own the excavator.
We don't own the excavator, but we will move it.
Get it moved.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Okay. This project has been an enormous problem and disappointment from its get-go. There is probably only one or two planning board meetings that we have had since this project started where we haven't had neighbors coming here talking about very valid concerns. I'm rather shocked to hear you say that you have built this exactly the way it was permitted. I disagree. This has been a problem all along, and the neighbors have been extremely patient under very difficult circumstances, and they have not been treated well, and they have not been treated with respect. And I know that some of my other board members, I'm sure maybe all of them will agree with me, that this has been a very difficult project, and one that we have learned a lot of terrible lessons from and would never want to repeat. So this minor engineering change, the reason we're opening it is so that we can have the peer review. But there is a cease and desist order on your property for a reason, and it's not because you built things according to the plan. It's not because things have been going well. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't think that cease and desist order should be lifted until every single thing on that site has been fixed to the plan that we approved. You're not allowed to change things after the fact, even if you're moving driveways, especially on a site like this that has such sensitive areas and so many drainage problems. You can't do things like that and then come to us later. Changes were made on that site after the certificate, the certificate of occupancy was issued, according to the people in town who have surveyed it. So I disagree with your statement about that.
Fair enough.
This has been a terrible project and a terrible burden on the neighbors on, all around your property. It's unacceptable. So we're opening this, we're not going to take a vote on anything tonight, we're just opening it so we can get the peer review started. But we also need to have you come in for a meeting off-camera with many departments, so we can sit down and go through line by line of everything that's wrong on that site, because it's unfair to the, to the neighbors that live there and what they've been through.
Okay, we'd be happy to do that.
Could you set that up soon? What is your availability? Are you around?
Well, we've been emailing, asking for the same meeting for weeks, so...
Are you located locally?
Yes.
Great.
They have, they, to their, on their behalf, they have been looking for, to meet with us, and between the building department letter and getting the scope out, we, we acknowledge that we do want to meet and want to meet.
The letter just went out, it was a little while ago, so.
Yep.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? No? Okay.
I have one other question. Weren't the issues as far as grading and fill and so forth on this? And I don't recall those being resolved, you know, the, well, could we do it this way, could we do it that way? But if they increase the grade by filling where they shouldn't have, and that's running off on the neighbors, you know, that's unacceptable, really. And I want to know from the staff, has, has that been resolved to the satisfaction of the neighbors?
No, and that's one of the reasons why we're undertaking, well, we're not sure. That's why we're, that's why there's a cease and desist, and that's why we're undertaking a peer review to find out.
I think you should wait for the, to talk to the peer review in order to decide how significant that is and what the, what the factors around that are.
Well...
I don't think we're going to resolve it.
As you know, the planning board in Burlington...
As you know, the planning board in Burlington has a lot on their plate at virtually every, every meeting. And to me, this has been the biggest time waster, really.
I mean, I, I've been on this project since the beginning and, and nobody has ever contacted me and asked me to, to look at anything. So you, you might've had it, have been here every meeting talking.
Well, that's why I'm asking the staff.
Reached out to me once.
Well, that's why we wrote the letter in August after the observation and that's.
So nobody ever spoke with them?
That's how this process began to, right.
Nobody spoke to us.
The letter in August detailed many, many problems on the site, am I correct? And who did that letter go to?
The applicants here.
So you did have that letter as of August that enumerated many problems?
We started working on the redesign.
So you did know.
At, at that time, yeah.
Prior to that, though, we hadn't been contacted. There'd been inspections.
That was six months ago.
This has been a problem for three years.
There had been inspections through the entire process for, for the drainage system.
By the town. The town does the inspections for that.
So nobody.
Nothing was done outside of the purview of, of the town engineering department.
Nobody spoke to them, they, they got a letter, so.
I can only speak to what we specifically said. I know as a department, being one of many departments, we've discussed this amongst other departments quite a bit. But I'm gonna speak for anybody else.
I think you get the message that this has been an enormous problem. It's something that we want to resolve and, and then do away with. But it has to be done to the satisfaction of the plan and the neighbors. They've been through a lot. So we'll, we'll get the peer review and we'll take it from there.
We've been communing with the neighbors, I appreciate that. We've been communicating with the neighbors through, through an email that we have to them.
Oh, I'm aware.
Giving them weekly, weekly or monthly updates through the construction. So we're, we're eager to finish, wrap this up as, as the town of Burlington, is that gonna show you that? And, and we'll go from there.
We're gonna continue this?
We are.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue this matter at the planning board meeting of February 6, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, six, zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Next on our agenda is item 6C, a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 75 Middlesex Turnpike, the Burlington Mall, Bellwether Properties of Massachusetts is the applicant. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, attorney Mark Vaughn with Reema Bronstein here tonight providing, um, Simon Brody, owner of the Burlington Mall, in connection with the, um, application. With me is Justin Feldhouse, who you know, the general manager of the Burlington Mall. And also Sarah Ebaugh with VHB, who prepared the plans that have been submitted for the record in connection with this. So we're here tonight in connection with the minor engineering change for some site plan modifications of the mall and the area, um, near the food court entry. Most notably at the mall, these modifications are really being done to enhance the appearance and functionality of that sidewalk area that's adjacent to the food court entrance. And to improve the, the parking layout and some pedestrian protections in that area as well. So, um, I'll maybe tell Sarah to walk through the plan in a moment. But just very generally speaking, what we're looking to do is expand that existing sidewalk area that's in front of the, the food court entrance. If the board recalls, we were before you for a, another modification to that food court entrance where it's being squared off. So we're looking to have an expanded sidewalk area, landscaping and lighting improvements. Really, the goal is to provide a more inviting, um, pedestrian friendly experience, similar to what the expanded sidewalk in that Sears redevelopment area. So very similar in, in concept. We're also building in the future flexibility for, um, having some paved patio paver areas in front of where Legal, the former Vasido and Friendly Toast is. So that in the future, if any of those restaurant tenants wanted to consider having outdoor dining, that would be there for them to be able to utilize. Obviously, that would be subject to separate applications before the board for special permits or whatever it might be. And there's also some stamped, uh, paved crosswalks and things to improve safety in that area. And then one of the other things that you'll see on the application that we can talk to, and again, I, I know, Madam Chair, you had brought this up at a prior meeting, is we have shown areas on the site where we're having short-term 15-minute parking. Not tenant-specific, but, uh, there are pockets of like eight spaces in a few different areas that we can show on the plan. I know the board wanted us to come back and address that in a comprehensive manner. So we thought appropriate and prudent to put that on this plan and have it done. We've tried to be, uh, somewhat conscientious about where we would locate those for short-term so that they're near entrances and whatnot. But again, the intent is that those would be generic 15-minute spaces, not for a specific restaurant or a specific tenant. So maybe Sarah could just quickly walk you through this and.
If I may, um, perhaps it does kind of seem almost like two different things. There's the, the changes outside those two restaurants and then there's the 15-minute parking. Can we sort of separate them and discuss them separately?
Sure.
I think it might be a little easier that way. Thank you.
Good evening. So as Mark mentioned, this is mostly to improve the pedestrian accommodations in the area. Again, three permeable paver patios for those restaurant tenants. They are configured similar to the others that have been approved around the mall. They're 12 feet deep with an eight-foot sidewalk adjacent to them. With that expansion of the pedestrian area, it is shifting the drive aisle out into the existing parking a little bit. We are maintaining a 26-foot drive aisle for the ring road as well as, um, this pedestrian plaza area for a stamped concrete crosswalk to delineate the pedestrians crossing from the main drive aisle. In terms of parking, there are two existing accessible parking bays here that we're combining into one. This allows us to provide an access aisle from the accessible spaces to the main entrance that's completely protected from vehicles. Additionally, we're proposing four parallel spots, um, outside of the existing Lord &amp; Taylor entrance. This is to alleviate some of the loss of parking due to the driveway shift. And provide some parking for that main entrance that doesn't exist today. In terms of the patios, again, they will be permeable pavers along with some additional landscape islands and some planters scattered throughout the limit of work. We are increasing the impervious by about 1,600 square feet. There is no changes to the grading or drainage in the area. A small utility improvement for an oil interceptor within the loading dock area here that will tie into an existing sewer service right outside the drive aisle. We were in front of Conservation Commission last week for an erosion and sedimentation control permit and that was approved. And I think that covers all of the site changes, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Can you just announce yourself and who you're with for our clerk?
Oh, sure. Sarah Ebaugh with VHB, the civil engineer.
Thanks.
Okay. Staff, did you wanna say anything before I?
Um, yeah, I had a few things. So I appreciate just kind of separating the two discussions 'cause we would recommend that as well and I'll get to that in a minute. So overall, um, how many spaces are, are we losing with the bump out? I, I know it's not too many, but.
It's seven spaces and we are still in excess for the required zoning.
You are, I know you're in excess, so that's, so that, that leads into my next comment. So you have 26 feet along that front aisle. But when you're looking at the four spaces that, near Lord &amp; Taylor, the building department actually commented a concern about a pinch point there and we would echo that concern. It's a main ring road for, um, for the, the mall. That stretch, actually, people drive kind of fast right there because you're coming around Macy's and then you get some, um, get some momentum and then, and then you start to slow down after that. But right here, we were a little bit nervous about those spaces. And also, um, you note on the plan that at the closest point, it's only 24. So you're keeping 26 in front of the food court, but in the main ring road narrowing it down to 24. So we would actually recommend eliminating those spaces. We appreciate that, that, that food court, since I think the beginning of the mall has been a congested parking area. And I think these improvements, um, definitely improve the pedestrian connectivity and other things. So we're in favor of all of these improvements with the exception of the four spaces along the ring road. And then I know there were some comments about the placement of handicap that they might wanna move into a little bit more. And just the other comment on this, on the separate piece. We, um, in speaking with the chairman and thinking about it and thinking and knowing that we probably need, um, a site visit and a little bit more understanding about the 15-minute spaces and where they are and who they're for, that we actually kind of set this up a little bit to approve and let this get going. But potentially continue discussion on those other spaces, the 15-minute spaces. While appreciate that they're on the plan and brought forward, we just believe they might need a little bit more discussion and didn't necessarily wanna hold up what we, what we're good with for most of these changes here. So, um, but that's up to the board, we can move forward with the whole thing. But anyway, that's, that's where we are. And we had, um, just a couple plans shall be revised to show. And one of those comments is about removing the 15-minute as part of this discussion. But, um, but again, it's up to the, the board.
Okay, thank you. Joe, do you have department comments?
Yeah.
Let's do those first.
Some comments from the inspector of buildings, which Kristen touched on a little bit. DPW Engineering, Fire Department and Board of Health. So Andy Ungerson from the Building Department has no objection to the proposed, um, minor engineering change. However, suggests looking at the, at drawing a C3 inset A-1 question, the reduction of the right-of-way without, with the outside of Lord &amp; Taylor from 224 feet from 31.6 feet, which I think was a concern that she had brought up. Concern he has is that the first responders, delivery trucks, passenger vehicle safe, safety, and passenger vehicle safety and without causing a bottleneck pass by. Also, if snowbank at intersection of parking lots are high, drivers will not be able to, uh, see oncoming traffic when they proceed into the roadway. That's the building inspector's office. The, uh, DPW reviewed the above application, have the following comments and they have, you know, they're standard.
Yeah, we, yes, we did see those, Mr. Impampa.
Yep.
Where, where are those?
Yeah, so that's all pretty much the standard comments. I don't think I need to get into those. Fire Department. I don't see a comment from the Fire Department, so. It says that there is a comment, but there's, there's really no, it just says comment.
Probably on our view, point system, it was favorable, so they are not, they're not in.
Okay.
But it's in, it's in our system and I'm sure you guys received a comment from them.
Yeah. Actually, they say no comment, so not sure why there's even a comment sheet. And the final one is the Board of Health. See comments, Board of Health, uh, staff offers the following comments in their fair proposal. Fire operations, stormwater memorandum dated December 2nd, 2019, and the, uh, referenced long-term pollution prevention plan must be updated to include maintenance protocols for the proposed area of permeable pavers. Records of inspection and maintenance must be available for review by the Board of Health upon request. Two, stormwater and runoff management plan submitted, uh, submittal form must be submitted in, uh, conformance of the Board of Health regulations for stormwater and runoff management. Three, should releases of oil and/or hazardous materials or other conditions be encountered during the proposed, uh, proposed site activities? The Burlington, uh, town of Burlington, toxic and hazardous material by law requires Board of Health be notified of such releases. Four, during construction work, dust, odor and noise control plans should be in place. And final, and five, following approval of recommendations by the Board of Health, any plan changes will be submitted to the environmental engineer to determine whether or not another appearance before the Board of Health is required. And that's it, comments.
Do you have any other questions, Joe?
My, my personal comments are, I, I actually like the setup. I like, I think that's gonna be, that's gonna be, it's gonna add a lot to have outdoor seating and areas like that. I think that in and of itself is gonna be a big enhancement to that area. But we do have some concerns about the parking, in particular, the handicap, um, spots that are, appear to be. Should we bring that up or will we bring that up at another time?
No, no, bring it up. This is, that's part of this.
Yeah, so the handicap spots all appear to be on one side, but it, it literally pushes them further away from the building than some of the regular spots on the other side of that, of that strip. So.
I agree.
The way I, typically those handicap spots handled are that the, all of the handicap spots are the closest to the building. And then the, uh, conventional spots come in after that. So I would like to see that changed. I'd rather see the handicap, handicap spots. In fact, in fact, I don't necessarily think that's in compliance with the law.
Well, the, the farthest one is almost 300 feet from the door.
Right. I, I think.
Some poor guy and a walker who could be me in a few years. Just gonna have a hard time.
Not tomorrow. Well, not tomorrow.
I've understood that you.
I understand that there's that walkway in the middle and that would be great for people in wheelchairs. But for people who are, um, not in wheelchairs, that are walking with walkers or canes, that's a long way to go.
Well, I think that by nature of the, in fact, it's a handicap spot. It's supposed to be the closest one to the door, right? And, and that's not the case here.
I agree.
There's a whole row that are actually closer than half of that row. So I'd like to see that changed for one. I think I'm getting, I think I'm getting some, some nods from the rest of the board on that as well, so.
Thank you, Joe. Paul, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not really, just how encouraged I am that Simon is putting what they are into that mall. I mean, considering what's happening as far as retail and so forth. And I spoke with one of the people one time and they, a group in there, and expressed that concern. And he said, no, he said, this mall is gonna be here forever. I said, bless you. And I also could not, uh, not thank, uh, Justin and the mall. I'm a recreation commissioner also. And Barbara will tell you that there's a significant group of people that are there making a contribution to the total health of, of the town. 'Cause we see each other nod and so forth. Because Justin's an active, uh, manager and he's around there all the time. But, uh, I, I walked on one of those cars the other day. There were 23 people down by Nordstrom and going up and down the elevation. And that's like at 8:15 in the morning.
Just push them out of the way.
So thank you. No, I'm slow and old. Let me go and buy.
Thank you, Paul. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions about the patio setup there you have. How tall is that fence on the end of the patio pavers or the, the bollard? What does it say here? The integrated bollard fence on the edge of that patio? Is that a, a physical, like, barrier in front of those things? Right.
Yes, we just saved two pages. Oh, okay.
What sheet do you?
I think we just determined the spec.
Yeah, I think, like I said, Mr. Spago. So the, the, the concept is that we're, we're showing, you know, where those patio areas would be. We're showing kind of as a placeholder how bollards and fencing would be around it. But it hasn't been finally designed. Again, the understanding would be any restaurant seeking to convert that to seating would need to come to the board for special permit approval.
Oh, so that's just a, okay, that's not really going in.
So you're not building the bollards and the fence at this time?
Correct.
Okay, I misunderstood that also.
So are you getting requests from, say, Legals or any prospective tenants that look at the space that, hey, that'd be really cool if we had a patio there? Are you getting that type of, those type of requests?
Absolutely. That's a, a request about dining is, is the, the new it thing. Everybody wants to eat outside and that's, um, a huge reason why we're doing this.
Has Legals asked for it?
They have.
They have? No further questions, Madam Chair?
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I think the only comments I have are with God to the, the parking spaces. We talked about losing the, the four along the, the side of the main drive aisle, the parallel parking. So now we're losing 11. And how many, and we're talking about the, the temporary ones later. How many was that proposed? How many temporary spaces, the, the 15-minute spaces?
15-minute spaces?
Eight?
No, well.
Well, there were groups of.
There's a whole, there's a whole separate plan.
How about, how about on the side? Well, I think, yeah, those ones numbered, that are circled, one, two, three, four, five.
Um, I can show you on the overall.
Thank you.
It's part of the, actually, can I just interject? The, all the, in, the, all the 15-minute parking, can we discuss that as a whole? Because if this one alone is, is probably fine, but when you see the whole plan, it's different.
Yeah, I can tell you where I'm coming from on this. It's because once you, once you lose the 11, and that's, this parking lot is very, very tight, except for maybe the other side. to the eleven, are gonna be the fifteen minute.
I think we're losing seven.
Well, plus the four that, right?
Those they never had. They were doing that, they were adding the four to, to offset the seven, so they'd only be losing three. So we're taking, if we take away the four, they still are only losing seven. Am I understanding that?
Uh, no, I think it's.
No. Oh, it's eleven.
If, if we take the four, it would be a net loss of eleven.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say. How many, now how many fifteen minutes do we have? So now that takes away, I mean.
Eleven, okay.
So, again, just in this section, if you don't mind, if, if you'd allow me, Madam Chair, just how many, we, fifteen minute parking spaces are we talking over in this section?
Should be listed here.
Gotta add them up. Yeah.
I'd say there's twelve or thirteen.
Yeah, it would be, it'd be eight that we would be, um, it's, it's not shown here, but it's up in this area right here. We, we showed like a grouping of eight fifteen minute spaces.
Eight. Okay, thank you.
But then, Bill, there's also the other ones in that area.
That's not, that's not, plus the police ones in the, that's not in addition to that.
The pizza place, the EV.
Yeah.
Two for, um, mall security, two for the Burlington Police Department, and two for Regina's that are over on this side. Those are there already. The grouping of eight would be, um, in this area right here, as I understand it.
And four EV, right?
I'm sorry?
Four electric vehicle spots as well?
That are exist.
That's existing, part of the charging station.
Okay. You're fourteen, so you get eighteen spots kind of designated in losing an eleven more. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Ernie?
A curiosity question, I guess, more than anything else. Is, was there a reason, and I agree with Joe on the handicap space, but was there a reason you did it that way? Is there, is there something we don't, we're not, we don't see?
Um, it was mostly, so the regulations state that it's the closest spaces along an accessible route. Previous, we are showing this here just as an access aisle. There was the, the space to allow that.
Okay, so that's the accessible.
Instead of having the spaces here and having them have to walk in the drive aisle to get to the main entrance.
So you were thinking the accessible route was the area between the parking spaces that you designated?
Correct. Just give them some protection from the vehicles.
Yes. That, that probably looks good on paper, but, uh, as I say, you know, in the real world, three hundred feet to move for somebody who has, has an accessible, uh, handicap plaque, it might be more than they'd prefer. And, uh, I forgot what else I was gonna say. I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, so if I could maybe add to the parking with, the fifteen minute one's actually coming to play for me here. So if we're losing the eleven, again, this, every time I go there, it's a, it's a tight spot, and they're looking for eight fifteen spaces in addition to the six that we have. I've, I've always said that the policemen don't need two spaces. I always park there in the police, uh, spots, to be honest with you, because I've never seen a policeman there.
They park in the fire lane, don't they?
Well, the fire can, can park wherever they want to.
You should say fire and police.
Regina is gonna be part of that, those eight spaces there. I think you've got to modify that. If you're looking for eight, either knock that down to six, 'cause Regina's got the, already the two. And that's, when I'm there, the Regina's, it's, it's, it's never, no one's ever there.
Always there.
Well, I've, I've been there, but when you're there.
Right in the night, seven o'clock.
But those two spaces are never, are never full all the time. And I, when I go there, I'm, you know, like, we're doing a Chick-fil-A run all the time. So, again, I would say even the mall security can park wherever they want to. And, and, you know, it's, it's nice that they have those nice front parking spots there, but I'd, I'd get rid of those two. So I'd like to combine that with the loss of the eleven to kind of make up for some of that, 'cause these, this is a real tight spot. Otherwise, I, it's very difficult for me to, to, to approve this. Although, how much I like it, you know, and, and everyone's into the outside, uh, eating and things like that, you're really taking away from this, the parking spots there, which is brutal.
Which is already tight.
Already tight. And, and that's without even the construction, 'cause I've been, you know, I grew up right around the corner. We've been there for, you know, too many years, so that's a real tight spot. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, I agree with what the other members have said. I also would want to see those parallel spots outside Lord and Taylor eliminated. People drive quickly there because there's no door. They're not expecting people to come walking out into the drive aisle, and we don't want to have anyone get hurt. Um, I appreciate the fact that you have this, um, this path in between the two rows of cars for the handicap spaces for people to get in. I think that's great, but I do think you could keep that for the first half, and then maybe pick up that chunk and put them down on the right, so you would have, some of them would still have that aisle in the middle, and some of them wouldn't. It would be nice if you could put the aisle on the other side, too, but I know you don't have the space for that. So, um, I like, I know what you were going for, and it was a good idea. I just think we have to move some of them that are further away, closer to the building. Um, I think we have to have a whole separate discussion about all of the temporary spaces, but I do agree with, with Member Gaffney that if we're gonna, if we end up giving eight spaces there, I, I think, looking at the other plan, there's way too many of them, but just looking at this side, if there were eight there, we would not need to have two for Regina's and four for the police. I would prefer to have those, just go back to regular spaces and just have that block of fifteen minute spaces. Um, because it is, it's the, one of that area and the one on the other side, those areas are your most, that's where everybody wants to park, and it's the tightest right now. And, and it's gonna continue to be that way. I also have a question about, um, if you do this, and I think it looks lovely, and I think people will enjoy that and will like to dining outside. So I, I think that's very nice. Um, when would construction start? Because to, if this starts before you're finished on the other side of the mall, I think that could be problematic as well. Do you know when, if this would start after that other side is complete?
It should be right around the same time that we're finishing, the other side.
Okay, so they shouldn't be happening at the same time?
April. Uh, I would certainly hope it doesn't, but I think timing-wise, we might have some overlap by a couple of weeks at a, not a very busy time of the year.
Okay.
March, April, depending on when the snow melts.
I would like to see it, um, this not start until the other side was complete, because it's a, it's very difficult, and it's a mess. We get a lot of complaints about it. And if you could finish one side, and then people see how wonderful it looks, and then when you started construction over here, maybe they'd be a little more patient, because they would, A, have access on the other side, but also be able to see your vision and see what it's gonna look like. And I think that would help. I would prefer that you don't begin this until the other side is complete. I don't know if that's something that we can write in or not, but that would be my preference. Um, so. Yes, Ernie?
One other thing on this plan, this sheet that we were looking at, C three point zero zero, uh, can you, the areas where you are thinking maybe some future patio work, can you mark that future or something?
Yeah, good.
So ten years from now, if it never gets built out, we don't say to you, how come you didn't build this? You know, that kind of thing.
Okay. So, um, I'm trying to figure out how we want to proceed, because we could vote just on this part of the plan and then discuss the fifteen minute parking separately? Does, is that what staff is suggesting?
Um, not necessarily, just because I.
So we wanna move on and discuss?
Well, just because, I mean, I've talked to you about it. I haven't talked to the board.
Yes, okay.
So, and we have to discuss if that's, in fact, the direction you wanna go in.
So, where did we go for the plan?
The, the plan before it.
The one before, okay.
Number.
So now we're gonna move on to talk about the overall plan for short-term parking, since that's, that's probably best way to describe it. Okay, so.
Uh, uh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, you might, um, can we, before you move on to that, can we get some consensus on the four spaces that we would recommend or move on?
Is there anyone who wants to argue it to keep?
And then if the applicant has a comment, just to.
You have a comment about removing them?
We're okay with removing them.
Okay, is there anyone here who wants to fight to keep them? Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, good. Thanks.
All right. So, um, looking at this plan, I'm seeing four blocks of eight and then two blocks of four. Is that correct?
So what I tried to do was to put blocks of eight at each mall entrance, and then to memorialize the locations that have already been approved by the board, Cheesecake Factory, Pizzeria Regina, um, and then fill in a few others. I tried to also, uh, right-size the Frank Pepe location.
Yeah, it's still eight, isn't it?
Well, it's shown as eight spaces. We've made four of them Frank Pepe's, since we have Pizzeria Regina on the other side. And we took the other four and made them fifteen minute parking, since that's it, right at that entrance.
I thought that this was, that if, that the goal moving forward was gonna be for all of these to be short-term parking spaces, not designated for a specific business.
That would be good.
That will be our goal moving forward, but where we have existing spaces that are designated for tenants, it's important that we keep them for those tenants.
But you didn't have permission to do some of them, so you couldn't.
Yeah, I, I think that there was, I know we had chatted about this before at a prior meeting. I think that there was a, perhaps a misunderstanding that Simon and Pepe's had at the time through discussions with the building department. I think that they were under the impression, Justin, correct, or I'm wrong, that putting up signage, short-term signage for a tenant wasn't something that required, uh, planning board or site plan approval, that it wasn't modifying the site plan, if you would. But, and so there was a certain reliance upon that, that Simon and Pepe's had to provide.
Well, you knew you had to come to us to get permission for Pizzeria Regina's.
I only knew about that when you mentioned it at that meeting.
But you did get permission for Pizzeria Regina's, right?
Honestly, we haven't pulled out, looking through this plan and looking at previous approval, we need to pull out the special permits and go through them.
So, the, so the bottom line, with the Pepe's area, it's my understanding that it, it was eight spaces exclusively, exclusively for Pepe's. So they've eliminated four of those to just make them non-tenant-specific, but given their current lease arrangement with Pepe's, it was important to keep four of them for them, but the other four would not be.
So are you telling me that you are unable to make those simple fifteen minute spaces for anyone? That you have some sort of contract that you can't do that?
That's what he said.
We see that contract? 'Cause was the contract eight or four or two or, can you take a look at that?
Contract is eight.
So you can't, you can't actually go to, you can't do this, then?
I, I absolutely can't. But I'm, I'm trying to appease the board, and I'm gonna have to negotiate something with.
Compromise, huh?
So if you can negotiate down to, to zero, right, you can do something.
One of the reasons that Frank Pepe's came here was because that they were gonna have access to these spaces. Takeout business is a huge part of any pizza operation, and they felt that they were gonna need all eight.
How's that going?
It's not, they don't.
They don't?
I'm not, I'm not saying that they don't. So what I'm, what I'm saying is it's a big part of their business. It's very important to them. They're a very important tenant for us, and I would like to keep those four for them for that reason. I certainly don't wanna see them.
We can discuss that, but just moving forward.
Understood.
You know, you can't go and promise things like that.
I, one hundred percent understand.
Because now you've made, you've made a contract with someone, and now it's our problem.
Yeah, but he didn't.
Understood. And, and for the record, I did not do that intentionally. I had a conversation with the previous building inspector, who told me that it was our property, our parking lot. This is verbatim. We could do what we wanted.
I believe you.
How long is the lease?
Uh, ten or fifteen years.
Okay, so.
You know, this causes, I'm pressed on, too, 'cause with all the restaurants coming in, and someone's gonna say, well, can we get two of our own spots? Regina gets it, Pepe's gets it, why can't we?
Right.
Well, we could eat, I mean, I can easily tell them the story.
We'll give you the picture.
So let's table that for now.
Just for the record, wanna say some of us ignore all of that.
So let's table that for now, but what we have here, as I understand it, is you have eight, 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 eight. So four blocks of eight, is that right? And then you have the.
We have three entrances around the, the former Sears building. Each entrance has a block of eight.
One, two, three.
And what I showed was a block of eight outside of the legal, of the mall main entrance, which is Legal Seafood.
Right.
A block of eight. And then we have.
Four blocks of eight, right?
Yep, that block of four, fifteen minute parking. The, the other four Frank Pepe's.
Well, that's still eight. There's still eight short-term parking, whether you say there's some are for Pepe's and some are, there's still eight.
Yep.
So that's thirty-two.
And then the Cheesecake Factory has four, I believe it is.
They have four?
Four.
I think so.
Thirty-two, so that's thirty-six.
For cheesecake or four for fifteen minute?
Thirty-six. And then there's some for the bank, too?
And the bank has had parking for ten years.
They have how many?
I think it's two. Is that on there?
It's four.
It's four.
Can I, can I ask a stupid question?
I'm just trying to do now, and I'm not good at it, Ernie, so give me a sign. Thirty-six.
Do you want me to ask while you're doing it?
Forty. So there's forty, correct?
Thirty-nine, in total on the property, on this plan.
Thirty-nine. There's a block of one for the Nordstrom pickup parking space. It's just one.
Okay, wait a minute, we have.
So it's thirty-nine total designated spaces.
Thirty-nine.
I'm counting more than forty, actually, if we count.
You count the police and the security?
And, and Pizzeria Regina's, I'm up over to forty-six. No? There's thirty-two in your four blocks, right? You have four blocks of eight, right? That's thirty-two. Then you have two blocks of four each. That's another eight. That's forty. Then you have the police. That's forty-four. And you have Regina's, two more spaces. That's forty-six, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Forty-six, that's a lot of spaces.
Well, I, I mean, it's forty-six out of fifty-four hundred parking spaces. So I guess I would just ask you to consider that in this context of it.
Some of them aren't really parked.
The other advantage of having these spaces close to the entrance, everybody wants to park quickly to run in and get, get something. The visits at the mall are shorter and shorter and shorter. And part of the reason that we have these restaurants coming is to help to extend those stays. Having these fifteen minute parking spaces is gonna make it easier for people to get in and out.
So the, so the, I have a question about the fifteen minute spots, 'cause they're, they're at every entrance, even if the entrance is sm-.
You say every entrance, even if it's an entrance to a major.
Mall's main entrance, only into the common area.
So just the mall.
Not Macy's.
It's a common area, okay.
Not Macy's, not New York.
Right, okay, all right.
Is there any enforcement at these, um, spots to, to park?
There, it's not able to be enforced.
No, so that's.
In any of them. So Frank Pepe's, police, as you say.
Even the police? You can't enforce any?
We can't. I, I believe the police are looking at it when they come through. I've parked there.
Why, why would?
They can't enforce on private.
Why would my tax dollar go to, for the police department to enforce your parking regulations? I'm driving property.
Oh, no, I thought maybe mall security might, I don't think our police.
And what they can do, say?
We just got, this is the park.
Truthfully, it's a moot point. If there's no place to park, you're gonna park where Frank Pepe's is, aren't you?
People already do.
I do it all the time, but.
Problem solved.
It's just my own little personal rebellion.
Yeah, I, I, right. No, I mean, it's, it's like the valet parking at Wayside, you know, you get up and move.
I know, but there's a lot of people who won't do that. They won't. They'll drive around and around and around looking for a spot when there's all these spots available that they're not allowed to park in.
Okay.
I was one of those people.
There are, there are rule followers.
Yeah, there are. I don't, I mean, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. Personally, I think forty-six is a lot. So the first thing I would, this is just my personal opinion. I, I would like to see the police ones go away, 'cause I don't think they're needed.
For sure.
Um, the police can park wherever they want. We all know that. And, and.
Well, if it's an emergency, they're, they're not talking that's.
Emergency, they park in front of the door, right.
Agreed. If I, if you don't mind if I could address that.
Sure.
So the, the police, agreed, when the police respond to the property in an emergency situation, they park wherever they want.
Right.
What they didn't wanna do is park in the fire lane when they're here on routine business.
Oh, okay.
When they come, when they do on a regular basis, to do patrols of the mall, to meet with us, to have conversations with other people. That's, and they specifically asked for it. That's not something.
No offense, they can't park like everybody else, then?
When they come, when they do on a regular basis, to do patrols of the mall, to meet with us, to have conversations with other people, that's, and they specifically asked for it, that's not something.
No offense, they can't park like everybody else then?
Well, I get that, well, that's what I mean, I get it, they, they, it's gotta be so infrequent. If everybody was a rule follower, my guess is ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, those spots would be empty.
Yeah.
Cause I guess the, the police are not going in on a regular basis to meet with you guys, right? I mean, not even once a day.
It's not every day, but they are here quite often.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, ninety-nine percent of the time, those are gonna be, if everybody follows the rules, those are gonna be vacant.
Yeah.
So if they do like a regular patrol, patrol check, they're parking there and then walking around from there? They know that's where we park?
They know that's where they park.
They could probably park in the fif, one of the fifteen-minute spots that you're designating.
You can park anywhere, no one's gonna say anything.
That's right, that's true.
Let me ask you this, where do you park?
I park in mall employee parking.
That's where the police should park.
He's the, he's the mall employee.
Whoever that is.
Make sure that all my staff park there with me.
That's where the police should park.
So I'm jumping in here, but my, my suggestion would be that we eliminate the police ones, and for each of these blocks of eight, I think that's a lot. I've, I've been, I go to the mall a lot, I hope my husband's not with me, I go there a lot.
He's not, he's working.
And the Pepe's Pizza parking spots, they're never full, I park there all the time. If I go there with other people, we all park there, there's plenty of parking there. Um, I, I just think eight is excessive, I think forty-six is excessive, I think you could do with a smaller number.
Sure.
Maybe six in each of these spots, and eliminating the police ones, because we all know they can park wherever they want. That would be my suggestion, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board.
Eight tenths of one percent.
I don't care, I park wherever I want, I'm a senior citizen. I don't park in the police, cause I've seen the police ticketing, people parking, parked at the police.
Oh, really?
Yeah, 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 well, the handicap, the cuss hole, they pay the police to go out and place those spots, and it brings in a lot of money.
Yeah, well, it does, because the tickets are very expensive.
Oh, more than that, more.
And I would want all of these in the future to not be business-specific.
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Not tenant-specific in the future.
Agreed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and that, and that was always the intent after our initial conversation.
Joe.
No, I mean, I think we discussed that, I, I do think as, you know, I do think there's a value to the police having a spot, but I think that they, you know, for the amount of times they're going there, I think they could park in the, in the fifteen, you know, the fifteen-minute spots, and no one's gonna say it, you know.
Yeah.
That's not gonna be an issue, and if it's an emergency, they're not parking in any of those spots, they're going right to the front where the emergency is, and I think, you know, I, I'm not sure if all of the fifteen-minute spots are necessary, but I certainly, the handicap spots, I would, I wanna see that changed. And I think going forward, I think obviously they're, they're in a lease, I mean, there's nothing we can do about that, and I, I think everyone agrees to that.
The one, you mean for Pepe's?
For Pepe's, they're in, they're in a lease, and, you know, we certainly don't wanna drive a tenant out of there either. But I think going forward, that needs to be acknowledged and understood and.
And, and when those leases come up, we would like you to renegotiate so that they use everybody else's fifteen-minute spots.
And that's the way that we'll.
Now, the, now the other question I had, is I think two of those are police spots and two are security spots, right?
We have two police and two security.
Yeah, so, didn't the, the security, I always used to see security cars underneath.
Where the loading dock is.
Where the loading dock is, i- is there any parking in there at all, and can, and can the security park in there?
Unfortunately, they could, unfortunately, the loading dock is so busy that we've had to move them out, and we're just not able to do that anymore.
So there's not any locations in there that they'd be able to?
Not that would be in the way of deliveries.
What about where employees park?
At the back end of the parking lot?
I don't know where they park.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, well, and so that's one of the other things that we've done to try to alleviate parking congestion, is we've employed, we have our security staff trying to enforce an employee parking program.
Can you explain that to us?
The employee parking program?
Yes.
Sure, so we've, we've asked all mall employees who come to work to park at the far perimeters of the property. We've distributed maps showing specific areas where they're allowed to park, and we ticket them when they don't, and we either find them or we tow their vehicles.
Right.
Can you submit to us some of that documentation?
Yeah.
And do you provide escorts for people that are employees that are leaving after hours and walking so far? You do?
Anybody who requests an escort, whether it's an employee or a mall shopper.
Okay, thank you.
So, so to follow up on that, the, the security vehicles, I.
So the reason that the spots are there is one, after hours, and I suppose it doesn't matter after hours, right, where they park, cause we're gonna have plenty of spaces, but they do come in and they do other checks, and they have to go back and forth quite often between inside the building and outside the building, and we certainly don't want them parking in fire lanes, or in a loading dock where it's gonna block deliveries.
What about the fifteen-minute parking? I mean, there's, how many, how many vehicles are there, how many vehicles are there?
Two.
There's only, you only have two vehicles for the whole site, and you got all these fifteen-minute parking spots.
That's three.
What I'm saying, I mean, couldn't they, you know, again, they're, they're the ones enforcing the fifteen-minute parking, so I, I can't imagine anyone's gonna be having an issue with them using one of the spots.
Right.
They're going in for fifteen minutes? But I think that that's, I don't know, right?
I'd agree.
Those spots, I'm just, you know, kinda doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but, you know, again, that's only, those are my comments. Paul said he parks in the cheesecake area over there. So it's cause he's a big cheese.
And I was the only one there, came back, still there, there's nobody parking, which is good.
Yeah.
So I'm doing my math, you had forty-six on the plan, and what I'm suggesting is knocking those blocks of eight down to six, eliminating the four for police, and that brings you to thirty-four.
Beautiful.
You have to keep the two for Pizzeria Regina, cause you have that in the contract, as well as these other two blocks of four, so.
Good.
Mike, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yeah, um, I don't wanna come off as anti-Pepe's, cause I'm too much pro-Pepe's. I've been there a lot, and I actually used to drive to, yeah, to Chestnut Hill before they came, so I don't wanna drive them off at all, but part of the fun for me when Pepe's came was the eight spots, and I gotta tell you, whenever I get takeout, I'm usually the only person getting takeout, and there's like four of them taken, or people will park right in front of Pepe's, like along that, that corridor, so those, so if they're asking, the, I mean, I know it's cut down to four now, but they're not using eight spots, and if you're getting takeout, I mean, I will ask, I said, but did you park, you know, I'll ask people if they park, and they're not, cause they just, so I just think that having tenant-specific, and we've beaten this already, that the tenant-specific ones are very problematic, with all the people coming downstairs at Sears, I know you're gonna get that question every time now when they see these, but just, just to be, just be mindful of that, and, I don't know, I, I just think, yeah, it seems like a lot, and I'd be in favor of cutting those down to six.
Understood, and, and, you know, I said it once before, but going forward, that's not what we're planning to do, and that was the, that's the intent of doing a comprehensive plan, so we don't have to have this conversation again.
Or maybe even a compromise would be with the four, combining them with security and police to make, I don't know, a compromise, if you, if you don't wanna lose, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud here.
Oh, you mean the four, other four Pepe's spaces?
No, the four by the, the food court, now we have two police and two security, combine them, I don't know, to both, two for both, I don't know. I'm sorry.
That's just my, that's just my opinion.
It's ironic, I, I think when you really think about it, I don't think, it's, it's only because they're prime spots, like I guess that's the only concern there is, right?
They were way out.
Yeah, if you put the fifteen-minute spots at the end, on the four end spots, nobody would park there, and they'd still be, they would probably have to just walk an extra, when you really think about it, those end spots, you're only walking an extra.
Three hundred feet.
Yeah, well, I mean, literally probably less than ten seconds more, or fifteen seconds more. So, you know, it, it really doesn't make sense to have those, you know, up on the building, just cause they're fifteen-minute spots, right? I mean, you could literally designate fifteen-minute spots further out in the park, and I don't think anyone would have any problem.
So where I work for the electric vehicle spots, they are the furthest away from the building.
The furthest, that's, well, I said that today earlier, actually.
Really?
You could put the electric vehicle spots further away, there's no reason.
That's why it flips my mind when I go.
Well, there's no reason they should be prioritized.
No reason why they should be red flags.
Free charge, right?
Uh, no, they don't.
The pizza spots, you know, you're carrying your pizza, and it's cold now.
Well, I get that, no, I get that, I, I get that.
And it, it might make you.
If you're gonna carry. You've seen them, parking in front of you.
Absolutely.
It might make you go to the other spot where the, where the, where the fifteen-minute spaces are close to the building. In other words, if there's two pizza places, and one's way out there, and one's over here, it's an unfair advantage, I guess you would.
Oh, right, but, you know, I, I guess the reality is, there's no reason, if you, if, even if it was the further spot in the lane, it's only, I mean, how many cars is the lane? It's only, you know, twenty cars to begin with, right? So you're walking an extra ten-car distance, and that's all it is, it's not, no reason they should be prioritized. The only ones, in my opinion, should be prioritized are the handicap spots, period.
Handicaps.
Those ones are close to the building, and that's, and that's no questions asked. Other than that, you, you know, you can designate them, but designate them further out, that's, and I don't think anyone would have a problem with that.
Yep, no problem.
People aren't rational, I go in the morning, and I go close up as I can get to go in and walk for an hour.
Good point, Paul, very good point.
Oh, really, I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I say, this is crazy, I should be parking next door and walking across.
He wants walkers, he wants to designate some walker spots up in the front.
All right, now I forgot where we were, who's got to speak, did no speak?
Madam Chair, it's Bill's turn, thank you.
No, I, I think I've had my say there, thank you.
The only thing I can think of as far as the compromise is concerned, do, do, we, did you wanna get rid of both the security and the police spots, you said, right?
I did, because I think they can park in the fifteen-minute space.
Are you okay, you're at thirty-four, right, Barbara, is that what you said?
Yes, what I was suggesting, and this is, you know.
Yeah, suggestion.
They'll ask you what you think of it, and we'll see what the board thinks of it, is have each of these blocks of eight reduced to six, and then eliminate the four police slash security, cause they can park in the fifteen-minute parking spaces. That brings you to thirty-four.
Does that work?
That works for me if, but if the board would consider keeping the, where Frank Pepe's eight spaces is, are, because there is already a bollard installed there.
Four and four, in other words.
It's four and four there, but I'm comfortable going to six in all the other locations.
Oh, okay, so it's only two, right, so it's thirty-six instead of thirty-four.
What's this, oh, I just found another one, that's what your one is, Nordstrom pickup?
Oh, okay.
So that would bring it from forty-six down to thirty-six, I think, right?
It would bring it to thirty-seven, actually, cause we just, I just noticed the Nordstrom pickup one. What's that all about? Nordstrom people have to have their own pickup spot?
Oh, yeah.
Buy online, pick up in store.
Oh, yeah.
Is that in your contract?
It is not.
Okay, let's get rid of that, okay.
Whatever's not in your contract, you gotta get rid of it.
Have you, have you been to Kohl's recently, not to check, nevermind, same thing.
Same thing, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, okay, then we'll be down to thirty-six, if you wanna keep that one block of eight where Pepe's is, it'll be thirty-six instead of forty-six. That's what I'm suggesting, we haven't obviously voted, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. All right.
Protocol.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak about this? Great.
Can I make a comment before you?
Yes.
So for the police spots, we wanna check with the police before we finalize the elimination. But also.
But make sure when you speak with them, you tell them there is gonna be a block of six fifteen-minute parking spaces that they are free to use.
Yeah.
And the point is, and the point is.
No, no, I know, I'm just just saying, there, so there's a few things I wanna check, one, check with the police, two, before we finalize, and I'm not saying we can't vote on it, but I wanna, if we vote on it, I'd like at least you to kind of deputize one of the board members to work with us to finalize what this actually is, if you conceptually agree with the spots. I mean, no new tenant spaces, but also, you just said Nordstrom isn't an agreement, who, who is it that has agreements? Who has it that agreements that we already approved, who has it with agreements that the mall has approved, that are written somewhere, and then what are the other ones? So just to understand that a little bit more before we finalize it, but as I said, we can move forward, we'd like one of you to work with us in the mall to understand that as, and with the goals of no new tenant, fifteen-minute preferred, to reduce in some, if not all, some places from eight to six, and then we'll talk with the police department about the police spaces.
I'll appoint myself to that position.
If that's, okay.
And when you talk to the police, I'm just, you, you can actually say, it's, it's actually gonna be more convenient to have different locations that they can enter, because they may be, you know, they may have to walk, if they park in the police spot, they could maybe have to walk to the other side of the building, if it's business that's on the other side of the building, so.
Yeah, no, I totally agree, I just wanna check with them.
They're gonna have more flexibility of parking where they're gonna be doing business in there.
They may not, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to think a little objectively, they may not wanna park there if they're gonna be there for a half an hour, because then they'll be looked at as if they are violating the, so.
There's nobody.
If those new si, if you print new signs, if it says fifteen-minute or police parking, no.
Well, I mean, then everybody knows they're not gonna.
They just said the police ticket.
The police, right, the police can park, you know, they could park in a fire lane, they're not gonna get a ticket, you know.
I think my issue with the police parking is, I've never seen that anywhere before, anywhere locally, around the country, internationally, I've never seen.
We're groundbreaking.
We're groundbreaking, the first, the first.
Never seen a police car there.
Never seen any police-dignited parking, anywhere, so that's where it's, for me, it's just, it's, it makes no sense.
So we, we do that with police departments all across the country at our, at our malls.
I've never seen, never seen it.
So why don't we approve it without them, with the understanding that, you know, will adjust as necessary?
But if the police need it, let's bring it down to four instead of six, you know?
Well, I would, again, I would rather see them.
Cause we got the Pizzeria Uno over there.
It makes way more sense for them to deal with parking the fifteen, any location they wanna enter from, rather than stick them in one location and have them walk across, you know, especially we're paying them by the, you know.
Maybe we should have.
We wanna make sure they, very efficient when they do these, come in from where they're coming in.
Maybe we should have a subcommittee on parking, because, you know, we've been going for like forty-five minutes on parking spots.
At the point where we could vote on this tonight, and I don't wanna drag it out any longer if we don't have to.
Okay, propose, and I'll give, I'll vote.
I made a proposal.
I second it.
You wanna turn that into a motion?
So moved.
Well, I think we have to read.
Oh, we do?
Other stuff, right.
Okay.
Don't we?
I imagine.
Yes, you should read the motion.
To approve the request for an engineering change.
As amended, and you know what the amendment is, right? Okay, and I've already said I would appoint myself to work with staff to make any adjustments that we might need to.
Sure.
Based on if the police have some reason that we're not aware of, that they have to have those spaces.
I mean, you guys seem, you have consensus on the goals you're trying to achieve, and I, I just, the specifics, I wanna work out a little bit more.
All right, so I'll make the motion to approve the request for an engineering change for a property located at seventy-five Middlesex Turnpike, map fifty-two, parcel two adjacent to the food court entrance to expand and enhance the existing sidewalk, modify vehicular circulation, reconfigure parking spaces, and it's gonna be a loss of eleven. Designated for short-term parking spaces and installation of new stamped concrete sidewalks as reflected in the site plan entitled Burlington Mall Entry One Improvements, five Burlington Mall Road, eleven-hundred Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by VHB, dated December eleventh, two thousand nineteen, consisting of thirteen pages, subject to the following revisions, terms and conditions as amended.
Second.
Okay, before we vote, I just wanted to clarify, so this would be with thirty-six short-term parking spaces, and we can adjust them if we need to, but we've discussed that, and moving half of those handicap spaces closer to the building, as we had discussed.
Oh, yes, right, right.
Okay, is that, okay, so it's been moved and seconded?
Discussion?
Yes.
I would just like to ask the applicant, if I could, that, if you get any feedback on this, like where do they go, or they're not enough, could you let us know, just out of curiosity?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, um, okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, sixteen, six, zero, thank you.
Where's Dee?
Thank you.
I think just with my experience, you know, paying attention onto the stamped crosswalks, I don't know, Jill's put a lot after me today, that's effective, that's effective as a calming.
I agree with you.
I agree.
Also, it's a calming, calming method, I've seen the light, I've actually done it myself, the pedestrian light at Bill and Nineteen site, it's really calmed the traffic down on three A, once they turn red, people are upset because they get this new red light.
That's okay.
All right, I've changed myself a couple times, yeah.
Are we on page twelve?
We are on page twelve, and I'm looking for a motion, Paul.
Uh, motion takes seven, uh, seven A, seven B, seven C, seven D, and seven E together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six, zero. Hello, item seven A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point five point one, light manufacturing and processing plants of the Northwest Park Plan Development District zoning provisions, one sixty-four Middlesex Turnpike, Poly Six Technologies Incorporated is the applicant. Item seven B is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point five point two, to section one point five point two, laboratories engaged in research, experimental, and testing activities of the Northwest Park Plan Development District zoning provisions, one sixty-four Middlesex Turnpike, Poly Six Technologies Incorporated is the applicant. Item seven C is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point five point four, hazardous and toxic materials and chemicals, use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the Northwest Park Plan Development District zoning provisions, one sixty-four Middlesex Turnpike, Poly Six Tech, Poly Six Technologies Incorporated is the applicant. And item seven D is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point five point six, generation or storage of hazardous waste in excess of the volumes classified as very small quantity generator of the Northwest Park Plan Development zoning provisions, one sixty-four Middlesex Turnpike, Poly Six Technologies Incorporated is the applicant. And lastly, item seven E is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section twelve point one point five, administrative requirements of the zoning bylaw, one sixty-four Middlesex Turnpike, Poly Six Technologies Incorporated is the applicant. So I think you must be Poly Six, since I said it about six times.
Good evening, Madam Chair, for the record, and members of the board, for the record, Christine Hung from Rehm &amp; Bronstein, attorney for the applicant, Poly Sex, Poly Six Technologies. With me tonight, I have Matthew Stellmaker, the co-founder and general manager of Poly Six. Sitting to his left is Iana, Iwana Knopf, sorry, I've been trying to practice that name. Iwana Knopf, who is the director of materials development. And behind me, I have Kathy Joseph. She is part of Safety Partners, and Poly Six has engaged Safety Partners as their third-party consultant to help them implement their chemical hygiene plan and their emergency action plan. Poly Six Technologies is a cutting-edge, advanced materials and manufacturing company that spun out of MIT's Langer Lab in two thousand and sixteen. They specialize in the global aviation industry and three-D printing. Currently, their offices are located in Boston, but they're looking to relocate their corporate headquarters to here in Burlington at one sixty-four Middlesex Turnpike, which is part of the Northwest Park. They plan to take the entire second floor at the building, and there will be no exterior modifications. We have been having extensive discussions with other committees. We had a DCM meeting this past Tuesday that went very well. Last week, we had a subcommittee, subcommittee meeting with the Board of Health, and we answered all of their questions, and on Tuesday night, they voted unanimously to approve the project. So with that, I will turn it over to Matthew, and he can tell you a little bit more about the company and its operations.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. As Christine said, my name is Matthew Stellmaker, co-founder of Poly Six, and currently serve at the helm as general manager. We spun out of the Langer Lab in two thousand and sixteen as a material science company, and so in that, our core technology that we developed was an organic polymer that has unique properties. And for proprietary reasons, I won't go into, into depth of what those properties are. Over the past three and a half years, we've built a team of sixteen people. Recently, we've closed a fortuitous recapitalization, which gives us capital that we needed to grow. Tonight's a fun night for us. For the past year and a half, our team has been kind of scoping out greater Boston for where we wanted to be when we left the core Boston. We're in a Boston University incubator right now, so there are sixteen of us crammed into around four hundred square feet, and we need to get out and have more space. Over the past year and a half, as we've looked around for where do we want to be, all roads have led us to Burlington, for many macro reasons of which you have all been part of over the last fifteen years to turn Burlington into a really attractive place for companies like ours to come. We can pull from the core, we can pull down from the north and attract a very broad array of employees. Specifically, as we think about this space, this will serve for us as kind of our R and D hub. And so we will be doing certain, what we call, technology development for our organic synthesis of our core polymer materials, and then we will do some work in the process, scale-up and process development. There's a lot of automation that we are working on in the three-D printing realm, and so we will be doing a lot of this as we think about the mechatronics, the electronic engineering, as we think about building out a system. The actual large-scale manufacturing will never happen here. That will help it happen elsewhere, somewhere, you know, one to five years from now. Christine mentioned we're in the aviation sector, and specifically, we're enabling the next generation of jet engine technologies. There's a big carbon reduction story to our company that motivates a lot of us as we think about improved fuel efficiency in the global aviation sector. We're very passionate about this, as climate change is going to affect our generation deeply. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board. We're happy to answer any and all questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Kristin? Sure. As you have observed over the last couple of years, there's been, well, there's been a couple industries that have, have long-time cluster here in terms of medical device, and, and more recently, but actually have been here for almost twenty years into the three-D printing realm, when we started with Z Corp. Quite a long time ago that I know somebody that were on the board then, that we had a tour through, and that was exciting. And since then, we've had, I think we have three or four other three-D printing, Desktop Metal, who have come before this board, and some others. So, I mean, it's really, it's, it's an industry that started to cluster. You've seen some others come in. And Northwest Park has really been the strong cluster for additive manufacturing, is that the, the word? But additive manufacturing and three-D printing. So I think we should be proud that Burlington has that cluster and is, is attracting companies like Poly Six to Burlington, and we were pleased to hear kind of the reasons why they're coming here. When people move out of Boston with a whole bunch of millennial employees, it's nice to hear good stories that we're doing something right, that millennials want to come work here. We still, you know, we have a transportation issue that we still have to solve, but, but anyway, they're here. We, they have gone to see the Board of Health extensively. They are different than Desktop Metals, and I don't know if you, if you want them to describe it. We had them at the development coordination meeting this week, talk a little bit about their process and materials, but kind of less concern about some of the things that you deal with, with metals, and metal dust, and ventilation, and stuff like that. But they did go to the Board of Health on Tuesday. We do have comments. They, they were approved, right? Yeah, they're approved on Tuesday.
Yeah, and we agreed to all the conditions.
And I, we, we welcome Poly Six into Burlington and hope they stay here and grow here from twelve to thirty-five to four hundred employees, so.
Okay, thank you. Paul, do you have any questions?
Sure. You could give me all the proprietary information you want. By the time, by the time I get out the door, you know. But we're glad to have you. We're glad to have you. We're, we're, I might say, proud of what we've done in Burlington, and we're really pleased to get some companies that are going to take us forward, because many of the companies we have here are, have been here for a long while. And times change, and we're becoming aware of that and have met and discussed that. So companies such as yours are certainly welcome.
Thank you.
No, say, I, I echo that, and I, it's exciting, and I think I heard him say that he's coming here because the planning board has done such a great job. I like that guy.
We rarely get praise, so we have to soak it up when we can.
Take it where we can get it.
Yeah, no.
My, my background in a former life was urban planning, so I understand that side of the aisle very well, and the hard work that goes on, yeah.
Man, that's, that's a stretch, urban planning.
Yeah, so I have some departmental comments as well. Inspector Buildings favorable, and, and the Youngerson Department, Building Department has no obje, no objections of the special permit. Please note that subject property is located within the town's water resource district. DPW Engineering, it says, see comments, and again, they're, you guys have a copy of those, right?
Yeah, we have a copy, and we're fine with that. They're standard conditions.
Yeah, tends to be, tend to be the standard conditions, and they're long, so I...
Yeah, I'll save you from reading it.
Where do you have those, right? Next one is the Fire Department. They're favorable, as submitted. No additional comments. And then we have Board of Health.
We'll read those as well, and we're fine with those conditions.
You have those, you have a copy of those, and it's the same thing, it's very long, and it's pretty standard comments. And the Conservation Commission is favorable. Let me see, I think Conservation had said there's no outside, right. Favorable, no exterior work is being proposed, so there are no conservation issues. I think we're all set with that. And looking forward to having you guys there, and hope you have a lot of success here, I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No question, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Bill?
No questions, Madam Chair, thank you.
Ready?
A couple, as usual, just kind of curiosity. Sixteen employees, twelve thousand square feet. Are you going to increase your number of employees? Is that why you're looking for the twelve thousand?
Yeah, so, yeah, so just, just for some context, our goal by the end of this year is to be thirty to thirty-five. We, as of Tuesday of next week, will be seventeen, and we just got another offer accepted about twenty minutes before the Planning Commission started. So we're already scaling up hiring in anticipation, and we hoped that we would be approved tonight because we won't have where to put the new employees if we don't.
Along those same lines, you're in Boston now. I assume some of your employees are Boston residents or in that general area? And I didn't know if you were aware, although with Mr. Buckley, Attorney Buckley representing you, you might be, that there is a shuttle that operates? You are, okay, from Burlington to Elway Brook Station?
Yeah, we, we've spoken with Mr. Buckley, as well as, we've spent a lot of time with Nordblom Company. They've been fantastic to work with, and we know that they've worked hard with this shuttle as well. Right now, of the sixteen, eleven, either walk, bike, or take the train to work. So there are some adjustments that we have as a team, but the shuttle is something that we've talked about.
Okay, but you're able to, and you're still, you still want to move to Burlington, even though the public transportation is not that great, so we must obviously be offering other things that are equally as important. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And good luck.
Thanks.
I don't have any questions either. It sounds like a very interesting, exciting business, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, yes, Mr. Buckley?
Yes, it is. You're right.
Right. Do we get a tour?
I don't know. I mean, I was actually thinking, not about this business in particular, but I've been thinking a lot lately, there's so many businesses in Burlington that are doing very exciting, interesting work, and I've often thought, I'd, I'd love to get a peek in that business, in that business, but, you know, I'd probably spend an awful lot of time touring people's businesses and too busy to do, to take me around.
Well, it's a great thing we have our new Economic Development Director on board, and she will be seeing you, meeting you at our next meeting, so you should tell her that.
Yes, okay. All right, I think I'm ready for a motion.
Chair, make a motion to close the public hearing in this matter?
Second.
On these matters? Can we close them all? Can we close on all of them?
Sure.
I think we can do that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six, zero.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the request of Poly Sec Tech Technologies for a special permit pursuant to sections one point five point one, light manufacturing, one point five point two, laboratories engaged in research, one point five point four, hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, one point five point six, generation of storage of hazardous waste in excess of the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator in the Northwest Park P P D zoning provisions, and section twelve point one point five, administrative requirements of the Burlington zoning bylaw to prevent the operation at additive manufacturing three-D printing firm by the name of Poly Six Technologies for property located in Northwest Park Plan Development District and the Water Resources W R District located at one sixty-four Middlesex Turnpike, subject to the terms and conditions contained in exhibit A attached.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six, zero. Welcome to Burlington.
Thank you very much.
When do you intend to move?
Sometime late February.
Great.
Yep, thank you.
Welcome, and good luck.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on, we're on page thirteen. May I have a motion to take items seven F and seven G together for discussion purposes?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six, zero. Item seven F is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section six point sixteen, storage of oils and fuels, petroleum products, including storage for on-site heating purposes and landscaping maintenance equipment in excess of fifty gallons of the New England Executive Park Plan Development District zoning provisions, seven hundred District Avenue, Charles River Development, a street company, a state street company is the applicant. And item seven G is a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, seven hundred District Avenue, Charles River Development, a state street company is the applicant. Welcome, and thank you for your patience.
Good evening, again, Madam Chair. For the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn with Rehm &amp; Bronstein here tonight, representing Charles River Development in connection with these applications. Will be tonight is Pat Burke, who is with Charles River Development at seven hundred District Avenue, and also Michael Harris, who's with Cranshaw Construction.
Thank you. It's just that the A C just went on, or the heat, or whatever that is, so we, we lost your voice for a few minutes.
So we're here in connection with a special permit, a minor engineering change for a generator for their operation, and I thought it might be helpful to explain a little bit about Charles River. I'm sure you're familiar with the name, and you've seen their sign on the building at seven hundred District Ave, but they are located in that property. They are a software technology company that specializes in the financial services industry, provide software support services for a variety of investment firms, wealth management firms, other financial institutional entities such as that throughout, not only the country, but, but the world. They have offices throughout the country, but they are proud to call Burlington their headquarters, and I think you've been here in Burlington for about twenty?
Almost twenty years.
Almost twenty years. So they're a, probably even a more important tenant in the building than we are, from what I understand, so. But, and, and what I think was a major coup for the town of Burlington last year is that they decided to stay and also expand their presence here in Burlington. They were acquired by State Street last year, so they are a subsidiary of State Street, and they have expanded into the east wing of the building at the district, now occupying about a hundred and fifty thousand square feet with an expanded employee footprint as well. So as part of that expanded presence, and obviously Pat can talk to their business much better than I, but they do require a supplementary backup emergency generator to provide power for a pretty advanced software services operation system that they have, which supports their operations worldwide. So they need backup supply in cases of a power outage. So the generator that we're talking about would be located on the easterly side of the building, so I think everyone's familiar with the district and the park and all, but this is the building down here, seven hundred District Ave. This is obviously the, the parking garage that is here. So the generator would be located right here with that red block there. So there's an existing concrete pad that's there today that housed some mechanical equipment previously, so we would be looking to just simply reutilize that pad location for this generator. It would be a fifty-kilowatt generator with fuel storage for two hundred and fifty-five gallons, and would be state-of-the-art system, double-wall containment, comply with all safety containment requirements. So I can have either Michael Harris speak in more in-depth about that if you'd like, but I think it's very much consistent with what the board has seen before for generators with all the bells and whistles. But with that, be happy to answer any questions you may have, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Staff, did you have any comments or signs?
Not really. It's, it's a generator. And we, it, fuel storage requires a special permit. There are other generators in the park and in Burlington. Anyway, we have the traditional comments, sound dampening, to, so, you know, it's not a nuisance to the neighbor, not neighbor, neighbors, but the, you know, people in the park walking around. It is adjacent to a sidewalk, so there are, you know, there are people there. Protection from, you know, it, it's on a curb and kind of up a hill and on a concrete pad, so we're not, it's not in the middle of a parking lot. We don't need bollards, you know, every inch around it, but, and the last thing, we just recommend where, if possible, it can be screened. As you know, you can't screen a generator direct, right at it, but if, you know, you can kind of, just around it in view sheds, whatever they can do to, to, to screen it. But sound dampening, there's, we've approved a lot of generators. There's, you know, level one with no sound dampening, and, you know, level whatever for the enclosure, so we would recommend to look into increased dampening enclosures. Otherwise, we're good.
Okay. Thank you. Paul, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Joe, do you have a comment?
So we have Inspector Building. Our office has no objection to the application or proposed work. We have DPW in engineering, which again is the standard verbiage. Mark, I'm sure you guys have that.
Yes.
DPW, yep. And Fire Department, approval with the following modifications, flammable storage permit is required for the storage of diesel fuel. Border Health, you have, and that's the standard Border Health comments, yep. And then the Conservation Commission, John Keely, there are no conservation issues with this application, as the proposed location is greater than two hundred feet from Vine Brook and the wetlands, and the land disturbance is under the threshold for the erosion and sedimentation control by law. So I guess we're all set with that. And my only comment would be, you know, just to assure that it, you know, the sound dampening is the best we can get.
Mike?
No questions, Madam Chair.
No.
No questions, Madam Chair.
Excuse me, Ernie?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I do not have any questions either.
Other than the comment of I, we'd love to see that you've chosen to stay, and we've been here for such a great, a long time, and been such a great part of Burlington, so.
Okay. Page fourteen. Thank you.
To approve, make a motion to close the public hearing first.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six zero.
Make a motion to approve the request of Charles River Development, a state street company, for a special permit pursuant to Section 6.16, storage of oils and fuels, petroleum products, including storage for onsite heating purposes and landscape maintenance equipment in excess of fifty gallons of the New England Executive Park Plan Development District provisions permit to permit the storage of two hundred and fifty-five gallons of diesel fuel and installation of a new fifty kilowatt emergency generated 700 District Avenue, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit B attached.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Six zero.
Need a minor engineering change. To approve the request for approval, minor engineering change, property located at 700 District Ave., to enlarge existing concrete pad to support a new fifty kilowatt generator and associated two hundred and fifty-five gallon diesel fuel storage tank, as reflected on the red line, the site plan entitled New England Executive Park Renovations and Expansions. Pages one and two, New England Executive Park, Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by VHB, dated July twenty-eighth, twenty fourteen, and revised to March thirty-first, twenty sixteen, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six zero. All set? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Okay, we do not have any minutes tonight, I don't know where that came from, but we do have some discussion items and a few things also that are not on here that I, okay, there are on here. Okay, good. So, for discussion, we need to appoint a subcommittee to meet, okay, so the zoning request that we had discussed from, for the Escudero, that's been delayed, it's not going to be going to January Town Meeting, but there's really not all that much time between now and May, so we do need to appoint a subcommittee to look at that. Do I have anyone who would be interested in serving on that?
Sure.
Ernie? Do we need two? Anyone else? No one else?
It'd be good to have.
Okay, then I will do it.
Someone else?
I will, if no one else wants it, I will take it. Next, the appointment, I was hoping that I was going to hear from the Historical Commission before this meeting, but I have not. The Historical Commission came to the last meeting of the Sculpture Park Committee, and they requested representation on the committee, so we agreed that we would appoint a member from their commission to the subcommittee, but I haven't heard back from them yet as to who that will be. So at our next meeting, I will bring forward the name for us to vote on, and I wouldn't expect any, you know, problems with that. They just want to be involved in that committee and in helping us choose the proper locations and sculptures. So that's just coming up. I will let Kristen bring up the next item.
Thank you. So we, as you know, we have advertised for the Assistant Planner. We had thirty-seven applications. We interviewed, we narrowed it down to three, we interviewed three, we brought back two. A week and a half ago, they were two super stellar candidates, they were very different. It was very hard to, to choose between, between the two. And anyway, I'm very pleased in speaking, in speaking with both the references, it didn't make it any easier. But I do want to congratulate Brady Caldwell, who kind of just made by a hair, just kind of peeped out, to, to really, we felt was a very good fit, really ready for the job. It's hard, when you're interviewing people, two kids that are twenty-three, to say ready for an entry level, it's, it's hard to really describe how you feel someone's ready or not ready, and we really had a good feeling about, about Brady. He showed, he interviewed very well, he shows a strong work ethic and ability to manage tasks and people. He talked about his time as being an RA. He worked in the security department for the, for the Bank of New Hampshire Pavilion, and the person who he worked with, that he provided as a reference, just talked about some interesting situations that he had to kind of on the, on the fly have to deal with, and it was just, it was just good to know and comforting that, you know, the way he felt on his feet dealing with situations. So we, if all of you do agree, we will be offering him the position with a formal offer letter, and we would recommend that he begin at grade ten, step four, in the pay grade. I was kind of between three and four. And that would, what you'll see, you'll see our budget at the next meeting, it'll be a little bit less, but even with where we've kind of been in our funding so far, so. If you all agree, and I know some of you have met him, so I don't know if any of you have comments. As I said, I don't, I can't name the other candidate because I don't know what else he might be doing, and don't want to, but he was fantastic, and it was a hard choice. But I don't know if any of the rest of you have comments about, about the process that you were involved in in the second.
I think it was the correct choice. I, I agree with you. I would think it'd be nice at one of the next meetings that you invite him to come in so the public can meet him and, you know, we can welcome him on board.
He did mention he could probably start about mid-February. He's still working on some details, but when I, when I called him today to make sure I wasn't going to announce someone who'd taken some other position.
Yeah.
No, they were both, I saw the two final candidates, and they were both phenomenal.
They were.
Yes.
It was, it was very heartbreaking to have to make a choice between the two of them.
Yes, I did not envy you having to make that choice, Kristen.
Oh, I know.
But I'm sure the other candidate is going to be, you know, with his qualifications, is going to be able to find what he's looking for as well, so.
Right. And just the fact that, I mean, we had, we had two excellent candidates at the end, and they should both feel really great that they were chosen from such a very large field, and one that you said was full of very highly qualified people.
I only had to, like, really throw out three. I mean, there was only three people that really weren't qualified.
Yes, so I'm excited, and I know we want to get him in as soon as possible, so he can be trained and start contributing, but thank you. I think it was, the process went very smoothly.
Yeah, congratulations on finishing the process, and I think we could, I mean, it was a win-win, as I said that day. They were both excellent candidates, and it speaks highly to the amount of applicants we got, and I'm excited to see, to work with them.
Anyone else want to comment? Nope, okay.
Let Paul do work in there.
Yes, okay. So moving on, there were a couple.
Can you vote?
Oh, we have to vote? Okay.
That you support my decision for Brady Caldwell as the assistant.
Make a motion that we support Staff's decision to hire Brady Caldwell as our Assistant Planner.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six zero. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, this past Monday, I attended the Board of Selectmen meeting, and there were a couple of items that came up there that I thought the board should be aware of. I don't know if anyone else had the chance to watch the meeting. There were some, two items that were of concern to me, that I wanted to make sure the rest of the board members were aware of. The first one is regarding something that we've all discussed in the past, and that is the sign at the building nineteen, former building nineteen site, the shop that Simon's, I think it is called. And if you all probably, you probably will all recall that we sent a letter this past summer to the Board of Selectmen, we actually sent two letters, basically asking that they do not allow the sign in that location. The board voted, as I understand it, three to two to allow the installation of the sign in that location. And I have grave concerns about this. I think it opens the door to other businesses who are going to want to put signs on town property, and I think it's unwise, and I'm not sure if it's actually even legal, but I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of it, and I wanted to ask the board if they, if the other members would be interested in having our staff look into if there would be an appropriate appeal process. I'm not sure exactly what that would be. I think that the staff would have to look into that. I think it is very important, and I would like us to make sure that we pursue every avenue before we allow this to proceed. So I'd love to hear your feedback.
But if there was an appeal now, would the appeal be through the Board of Appeals?
I, I don't know.
I don't know as far as that kind of sign and so forth.
All I'm asking is, do we want to instruct our staff to investigate what would be the proper procedure? I don't really know what that is.
Sure, that'll, you know, it's always nice to have something in hand, you know, so if, yes. It's kind of tough. One thing that I do object to, that I see, you mentioned frequently, is that the representatives, the legal representatives say, well, we all along expected we were going to have a sign there, like it's a by right. No, really. I mean, they said, you know, well, they said, we, we wanted a sign all along, and I felt like, I wish I'd gone to the meeting, I would say, I objected to it all along, so if, if you don't mind. Yeah, they, it is difficult, because you do have all those businesses in back there, and, and frequent, if I'm going looking someplace, you know, if you see one of those signs in, I know that down in the Outback, they had the problem, so they put them on the wall for a while and so forth. But if you're going and looking and you see a signboard, yes, they're in this location. But, yeah, I, it's not trashification, but that's, you know, it's, it's a decision to try, as Joe has done, I think more so, even more so than I and some others, to look at the aesthetics of the town, that we, we have to, you know, consider those things seriously, you know.
Thank you, Paul. Now, did you have any?
Yeah, I just, I just want to, want to really express my concern with that precedent that was set. I want to, I don't understand it. What's very concerning to me is when executive off, the executive board in this town looks at a situation like that and says, there are laws against it, so we will circumvent those laws by giving some town property to allow them to place a sign, a, you know, a commercial, a, a business sign on town property. I don't understand that, and when I watched the meeting, it was, I was perplexed by the fact that the majority of the board appeared to feel that it should have gone the proper channels, but yet that's not what the result of the, of the, of the vote was. It's especially concerning to me, given the fact that for thirty years, I've worked on the downtown center, and worked on trying to get a revitalization and rebuild the downtown center in a, in a, in a, an aesthetically pleasing and fashion, you know, that we can be proud to go down there, and now we're looking at a board that's making decisions to circumvent the laws and put signs that are completely contradictory to everything we've worked for down in the downtown center. It's very concerning to me. It should be concerning to every resident of the town of Burlington, because where does that stop? Honestly, that, in my opinion, it's a, a, a stretch of their authority, to say the least, and I'm honestly being very mild when I say that. But I think it's something that everybody needs to be concerned with. So I, I would be in favor of that, not only for this item, but for future items that maybe they choose to do that to again in the future.
Well, actually, I'm glad you said that, because one of the board members did express the opinion at that meeting that.
Should have gone as.
Other, no, that other businesses, well, I asked the question, will you be considering other, other town property? If other businesses come to you looking for signs on town property, will you be entertaining those requests? And one of the board members expressed the opinion that it would be absolutely advisable or fine to have signs on public property as long as it was benefiting the businesses, and I think that could become a huge problem very quickly. And I think it's also hard, if you give this to one business, to tell others that they don't get the same advantage.
Well, that's the big problem. The precedent you set with that is, you know, now I.
Now you're favoring one business over another.
Well, you know, I have a law practice.
Right.
I'm on the, I'm right across the street from the town common. I'd love to have my sign on the town common. I, I would never do that, because it's just not the right thing to do, but what's to prevent someone from me, or somebody else who has a business on the town.
Right.
From, from, you know, attempting to put their, so you, you know, you, you don't, as a board, vote to circumvent the laws by technicalities. That just doesn't.
And you can't vote to help one business over others. There are other businesses that would also want this.
It's a horrible precedent to set.
We're sort of giving them an advantage that we hopefully won't give to others.
You know, that's one thing, you know, this board is not a person in this town can ever say, we don't, this board doesn't apply the laws across the board. And when we've had the town come before us, we've applied the laws the same way to our town as we have to every business. And to be honest with you, I've had businesses come up to us and say, hey, you guys, you know, you apply, we've seen that, and they've thanked us for that, and said, look, we know you're not, you know, you're, you're just applying the laws, you're just putting the laws where they should be and making people comply with the laws. And when they see us do it to our own town, when they come before us, it's, you know, that holds a lot of weight. You can't go treating people differently because you know them, because the next time someone comes before you that you grew up with, all of a sudden, you're giving them what, it just doesn't work that way. It just doesn't work that way. And that's, it's a shame, and I just hope that that's the last time I see that happen in Burlington. But I'm not so sure that that's going to be the case, unfortunately.
Thank you, Joe. Mike, did you want to weigh in?
I would. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would want to say that I'm very concerned with the project. We've got one tenant there and.
Oh, yeah.
And nothing else really going on, so on the flip side of what everyone's saying, I'm very concerned about the viability of that project and what's going to happen there, if it's even going to get another tenant. That said, maybe we could use what's happened here as a springboard to get the three A Subcommittee back meeting together and back and active. We would have had more, or maybe finished up the master plan, we would have had more teeth kind of to, to go back at them, saying, we have, you know, this vote was taken, and we were, this many people were opposed. I'm just thinking out loud here that maybe this we could use as to springboard other protection of what our vision of the town center will be.
Would you be in favor of asking Staff to research what options might be available to us? That does not mean we would actually file an appeal, that would just mean have them look into it and report back to us.
I don't think it would hurt.
Okay, thank you.
Check the options.
Bill?
Yeah, no further comments.
Ernie?
I guess, one of the main reasons this happened, and in my opinion anyways, and I don't say it was right or wrong, one of the major reasons it's happened is because our signed bylaw is antiquated. It's fifty years old. I can remember serving on a committee, a signed bylaw committee, with Frank Moran, so how old has that got to be? how old is that going to be? Way back. And we've made, I know Joe was, I think, on the last try. We've made, we've made-
Bill wants as well, yeah.
I know the last two.
We made, we've made, we've got to get off the-
Pot.
Pot and get something done about it, or it's going to keep on happening. People are going to find ways to go around, to get done what they need to do in order to, in order to stay in business. I mean, how are, I'm not, again, I am not endorsing the way it was done, but if I'm a business owner and I have that project, I'm going to take whatever way I can to advertise-
I completely agree with you.
Ernie, I don't blame, I don't blame-
We're not blaming the business owner.
No, 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 I, I, okay.
I blame the, I blame how it was done because that's not, that wasn't them that did that.
The fault of the business owner.
So I, I-
They can, I don't blame the business owner.
The zoning bylaw review committee has already set up a little subcommittee, it's only two people right now, but to look at the signed bylaw and I'm sure that there's a lot of people, Kristin had suggested, rather than look at it the way that when I was there and when Joe was there and, and Bill was there, we tried to do the same by zoning districts and maybe we do it geographically, which probably makes a lot more sense. In other words, town center has its own signed bylaw and-
But, you know, if you remember the last go-around at the signed bylaw, we were literally this far away.
I really wasn't involved, I wasn't involved in it.
Bill remembers, right? I mean, we were literally this far away and-
And what blew it apart.
And so the, the chair of the committee happened to be the, the president of the Chamber of Commerce, which is, you know, whatever.
Yeah, okay.
But the fact is, there was, you know, they didn't get everything, which, you know, we were aggrieved, they were aggrieved, but we said, "You know what? Here's a good compromise."
Yeah, it's got to be a compromise, obviously.
They came before us and tried to push it, it didn't push, we tried to tweak, they went away, never came back again. That was the end of it. In other words, they never called another meeting because they didn't get everything they were looking for. We were this far away from putting it together. In fact, we had broken it into three pieces.
Yep.
I think two of them, we were all set with, we were ready to vote on, but they didn't get their third piece and we were going to go back to committee and work on the third piece. They were so-
It's too bad after all that work, it just didn't go, you just didn't go forward.
If, if, they were in front of us, you know, they came before us and, you know, tried to vote on it and, yeah, yes.
Here?
Yep.
So it sounds like the groundwork is there already.
Oh, it was, yeah, I mean, if we can remember, it was a while back, right? But it was, so Bill and I were the-
Fifteen years?
Bill and I were on from the planning board.
Yeah, yeah.
That's in the Board of Appeals that time.
Yeah, he would have been-
It was within fifteen because I've been on fifteen.
Board of Appeals, working on that.
You're on the Board of Appeals, but I was-
So anyhow, I think, I, I don't necessarily agree with the way it was done, a private sign on public property, even though there's a lease and the town's getting some money, five hundred thousand over, how many years was it?
It's twenty years.
Over five, over twenty years, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's twenty years, so.
But I, but I, I hope it's an impetus to, to, to get this whole thing moving because we can do something.
Well.
Don't we?
Yeah, I mean-
Or either that or we say to the merchants in town, "Sorry, go away."
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if they had another sign bylaw in place that this would still happen.
I think it would have happened because the-
Nothing's going to prevent that from happening, other than-
Oh, the way it was done.
You know, a board that complies with the laws of the town. In other words, you can't, you know, when you've got people that don't comply with the laws of the town, you, it doesn't matter what's in place. If they want five extra feet on it, they're going to go and do what they want to do if they're going, if they feel they're going to get away with it.
I, I obviously don't know what happened, but I, I would imagine that the Board of Selectmen got some legal counsel on this. At least for the RFP, I know that I thought they did.
I'm sure they must have. But anyway, so the question I'm asking is-
No, I'm not.
No, you're not what?
In favor of looking for a way to appeal.
Okay, in instructing staff to investigate a way to appeal.
The majority of the board is.
Okay, all right.
So you feel like at least this, an appeal of this-
He just wants to let it go.
To find out that if, if this isn't the proper thing, then it continues to do in the future. We need to know, understand whether it's, whether it's correct or it's not, if it's not, you know.
No, I think we got to get off our cans and get a, a signed bylaw, proper sign bylaw.
I don't think the two things are mutually exclusive.
Or have a thread over our heads that people are going to continue to break laws. So in other words, we want to get a, an, an understanding whether this is something that continued, that can continue to happen.
And we're going to probably get that from town council.
Well, no, I, I don't know. I'm not, I don't know. I mean, that's the question is going to be.
My point to you is I don't think the two things are mutually exclusive. I think that staff can review the process and see if there's anything that we can do to appeal, but I think all of us agree with you that the sign bylaw is in desperate need of updating.
I'd prefer staff spend their time on completing the master plan, which is now four and a half years into.
Okay, so you-
No, I'm not.
So should we vote though?
So Ernie, so I guess, you know, I'm, just for argument's sake, you know, if we complete the sign bylaw and put the sign bylaw and, and put it together and it doesn't include a fourteen-foot directory sign-
In the town center.
There's nothing stopping them from saying, "Hey, we want a fourteen-foot directory sign," and doing what they just did.
The thing to stop them is when they run for reelection, you don't vote for them.
Well.
The same as me or you.
But the sign still is there.
That's, you know, you do damage for twenty years and, and, you know, you continue to do damage for twenty years.
To answer your question, am I interested in looking to appeal it?
That's fine, oh, I understand that. I understand that. So let's take a vote.
Well, so that must mean you sanction what they've done. I don't, I don't, you know, the bottom line is I don't.
I don't think I have to put words in my mouth, Joe.
I don't, I'm not putting words around them.
Let's vote.
You just answered your question right there.
Okay.
If you're not concerned about going forward and, and correcting, if it's a problem correcting it, then I, I believe that you're agreeing with it. That's what I'm saying.
We're welcome to your beliefs.
Okay.
No, it's, it's, it's a conclusion that was drawn from the facts.
Let's take a vote. I have asked them, you, you understand what it is that I've asked. I'm going to just, all in favor of instructing staff to investigate if there are any avenues through which we could appeal this decision, please say aye.
Aye.
And we have one opposed, is that correct?
I am opposed.
Okay, five to one, so we are asking, therefore, by that vote, we are asking staff to investigate the possibilities and get back to us. So you'll report back to us as to what our options may or may not be. Thank you. The other item that came up at the Board of Selectmen meeting that I was actually a bit confused about, to be honest with you, apparently there is a proposal for another friendly forty B called Windview Heights. It was not discussed at the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, it was voted on, but there was no discussion. They actually didn't even name it, it was in the agenda, but it was not discussed or named. The location was not provided, the number of units was not provided. I have been contacted already by a couple of town meeting members who were concerned and confused and didn't know what was going on. Some have done some research, apparently there was a meeting about this over a year ago, I think, by Board of Selectmen, but there was very little information that we could find, so it's disappointing that, you know, we had a friendly forty B just recently at Corporate Drive and that was a very collaborative process. Many boards and departments were involved in the process and it was a great thing for the town and I think it was handled very well. This kind of came out of nowhere and I don't think anyone really knows any of the details or maybe the Board of Selectmen does. None of us know what the details are. So I'm concerned and I don't really know where things stand in the process even, so I just wanted to make this board aware that this is happening. I've learned a little bit from staff about the location and perhaps you could fill the rest of the board members in on what little we do know.
So on Monday afternoon, or Monday late morning, I don't know, I, I contacted the Board of Selectmen's office and I said, "Wait, what is this?" So, and then looking back, so about a year ago, they took a vote, I'm not exactly sure what vote they took a year ago, and then I actually called Member Covino to remind me what this was. So there's a proposed friendly forty B that was at the end of Richardson Road, past where the current townhouses are at the end of Richardson Road. What's the name of that street? Is that, it's not Richardson the whole way up. But anyway, you go past the funeral, you turn at the funeral home, kind of go all the way up and it's right, kind of adjacent, so it was right, Liz has it up. So apparently there's a property that's between Mountain Road and Richardson Road that was being looked at for a friendly forty B of twenty-some-odd units. I think the town administrator said six affordable and then he mentioned something about over fifty-five. I don't know if you can do a friendly forty B over fifty-five, but anyway, but supposedly that's what is being investigated. And we just said, "Okay," what, you know, Richardson Road was developed, it was, it's been difficult since it was developed for parking and for fire. So anyway, we just had let them know this to say, you know, "We'd like to have a conversation about this." And anyway, I, I don't know if Ernie, Member Covino has anything else to say about it, but I just, I just think we should talk about it, that's all. I, I don't know enough about it, I don't know enough to really let you guys know enough information to really make any type of opinion. I believe the vote was to vote in support of it to send to the state, because under a forty B, if you recall with Corporate Drive, in order for a forty B to be proposed within a town, especially a town in safe harbor, which we are, over ten percent, you need to submit to DHD that you agree on the eligible location and they need to say it's an eligible location. I think that's what the vote was. And then if they do say it's an eligible, if they do agree, then it would be submitted as a, an application to the Board of Appeals, just like Corporate Drive.
Okay.
So we're not involved directly. As with Corporate Drive, we end up getting involved. So anyway, I just wanted to bring it up because we were so heavily involved in Corporate Drive and I know some of you are at the Selectmen's meeting and then, and have gotten questions and just kind of, what, what is this?
If it were to proceed and go through Board of Appeals, will it come to us as a site plan at some point? Or we have no involvement at all? Okay.
We will have no involvement at all.
Okay.
Other than, I mean, just as we, they have in the past, they've reached out to you for comment, just like we do with other departments, but-
Okay. All right, so I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware, because I was not aware this was happening until-
I saw something in the newspaper about it, I think it was a little thing in the, in the local newspaper. And I was trying to figure out where it was and so forth.
Yeah, it was this week.
And I thought, the, the process the last time started with us.
The suggestion started.
The suggestion, yeah, yeah. Formally, it was, yeah.
Yeah, because the property owner came with the journey-
Right.
And said, you know, "We know that Burlington has on their agenda to increase their affordable to, to above the ten percent, because our director correctly told us in five years with the number of houses being built, we're going to be out of our ten percent and then we'll be liable." So we, I believe, went to the Board of Selectmen and, because they're the ones that have to start the process, right? So we went to the Board of Selectmen and they said yes, because they had to do a lot of submitting the papers and everything. So it was, you know, not an easy process and it took a year.
Yes, but it was a very cooperative process, collaborative process through-
So we were nothing but the instigator, if you want, can use that term. Yeah.
If you remember, they, they came to us, they came to us asking us to support a zoning change-
Yeah.
In front of town meeting and we suggested that they maybe look at a friendly forty B.
Yeah.
And that's how we got involved. The way that, the reason Kristin mentioned my name was because the Housing Opportunity Partnership had this presented, looked at it, whatever, a year, year and a half ago. And I actually had sent an email to, to Jim Dougherty to ask him if we ever voted to support it and I got back an email that said we discussed it, but not-
Not voted, okay.
I, I, I'm really not sure, I don't remember.
So you're on that committee, you have not met about it recently, though?
We have not met for too long, a long time.
I meant on this particular matter, okay.
No, we have not, no, we have not.
All right, so I mean, there's nothing that we have to do about this, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware.
I, I just want to comment that I'm, I'm becoming, as I see what's happening and having a perspective, that we, we have to begin to become concerned about density in Burlington.
Absolutely.
And that was what I thought when I thought of that and I said, you know, "We've, we've done our part." I mean, if you wanted to go and say, "Here's what a town should do, they should develop a commercial sector if they can and they should develop housing," and the state has pushed and pushed, and you see it in the newspaper every day now that the governor's saying, you know, "We don't have housing for the people who want to come here" and so forth, but, you know, "Don't look to us to do everything." No, really.
It's true, Burlington has done its part.
Yeah, yeah, we've gone beyond.
If you're, if you're curious, the piece of property that they're talking about is somewhere between three and a half and four acres and it's individually owned right now at fronts on Mountain Road. If you get on Mountain Road on the right-hand side, you'll see like a horse corral. I don't know if you remember that place, gentlemen actually used-
So that piece of property is, is joined with the property behind it?
Yeah. And this is the property, yeah, it's direct, it's-
The topography is-
Yeah, it's crazy topography.
Like scaling the side of a mountain.
Okay, I thought it was Richardson.
Is it, is it down at the end?
Yeah, it is from Richardson Road, you could actually drive.
Okay.
And then it's down-
It's a, it's a dog leg.
Follow it through, you get to Mountain Road, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know where the access would be from.
So would this, that house with the, with the horses, would that need to be raised in order to put a road in?
I would think so.
Oh, no, I don't think you're getting a road up that topography, that's just-
Well, if you look what's happening, if you look what's happening in Woben on thirty-eight, they've done switchbacks to get up to the mountain. So, I mean, people are doing it, if it's a forty B-
Right.
You got no say in it.
And it might not be connected to the other one, it just might-
Well, and the point, well, the point is, the question is this, why would you, like, if it connects on to Richardson, you're saying-
Yeah, Richardson, Richardson, that, the car, because that's part of the forty B when that came through.
Right, yeah.
That is just a driveway, that is not a road.
Right.
You can't even fit two cars in that, so.
Okay.
If, if you try to get through there, you'll never get people in and out.
To get to a different neighborhood, that wouldn't work.
Particularly with what you're talking, another thirty units down there. And see, if you look there, it's a cul-de-sac, it used to be a cul-de-sac at the top. People park up there because it's basically a driveway and they can't, there's not enough parking space, so people are parking.
Yeah, they use it as a parking lot.
Basically, it's a, and it's, it's basically a private drive, I think.
It is.